Welcome all to the October 12, 2021, Ojai City Council meeting. Bill, will you please lead us in the pledge?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Flag is over here. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bill. And approval of the agenda, all in favor? Aye, aye. Yep. Great. Ryan?
Yes.
Wonderful. Okay, and we have a presentation tonight proclaiming October, Oaktoberfest. No, Oaktober, sorry. Knew I was gonna blow it. It's Oak Awareness Month. So I'm gonna read the proclamation and thank you, Mr. David White, for being here to receive it. Proclamation. Whereas oak ecosystems have been part of the Ojai Valley for millennia. And whereas research shows that oak forests improve air and water quality, human health, social and economic well-being, provide jobs and revenue, and improve the overall quality of life for citizens across neighborhoods and community boundaries. And whereas the California statewide forest resource assessment and forest action plan identifies the loss of oak ecosystems as a critical issue for the health of forest resources. And whereas awareness of the threats and impacts to oak ecosystems is an important first step toward behavioral change and opportunity to engage citizens to protect and improve the health of oak ecosystems. And whereas Oak Awareness Month, or Oaktober, is an opportunity for community organizations and citizens to take action to support our native oak ecosystem. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Betsy Sticks, Mayor of the City of Ojai, and on behalf of the Ojai City Council, do proclaim the month of October 2021 as Oaktober, Oak Awareness Month, and urge all residents to plant and help preserve oaks during this month. A tree's a hand. And I'd also like to thank Dave White, whom I've known for a long time, who has worked endlessly to support our planet and our trees and our children. So thank you, Dave. And you wanna come take it? Thank you. And James, any commission reports?
I didn't see anybody sign up, but I'll ask Gail to confirm that.
Let me double check. No, no commission reports.
Okay, we'll move on to public communication. We have three in person, Carolyn Goldwasser, Ron Solazano, and Karen Snyder. So let's start with Carolyn.
Okay, can you hear me? Or should I take your shirt off?
You can take it off.
Okay. What I'm, what I'm talking about tonight is the Ojai Active Transportation Project Proposals and the existing Ojai Valley Trail. I spent many hours this past Saturday and Sunday walking around, sitting, observing, talking with other pedestrians and bicyclists, taking notes and photos at these areas. These are my suggestions for consideration for safety and beauty, best practices for shared use of resources by all. First, I think there should be no armadillos, no other things raised up from the roadbed like planter boxes, pollards, et cetera, to mark the differences between the lanes. These raised objects are dangerous to all. Flat paint is safest and easiest. Second, standard practice is putting bright spring green paint on the surface of the road to show it is a bike lane and green stripes for shared bike right-of-way, such as driveways, intersections, or for making a left turn. Drivers of cars are used to looking at the road for lane information with arrows and words painted on the asphalt, so they will notice these green bike lanes. Third, the highway roadbeds are built deep with several feet layers of gravel, concrete, and/or asphalt, so there is little ongoing interference from tree roots. Off-road bike paths, such as Ojai Valley Trail, are often made with a thin layer of asphalt laid onto scraped dirt. As tree roots grow, they can break open the asphalt, and this causes tripping hazards for people walking and other hazards for bicyclists. Some root maintenance is required now on the Ojai Valley Trail. Fourth, the people who are using the highways are adolescents and adults, people mature enough to be aware of the hazards of moving traffic. Driver's licenses are given to people who have studied the rules of the road and agreed to abide by these rules. Children should not be using the bike lanes on the highway at all, in my opinion, and on the Ojai Valley Trail only with close adult supervision, especially because of item number five. Item number five. Most hazardous is where intersections occur. On the Ojai Valley Trail, near at least some of the intersections, which I visited this weekend, I saw caution signs. Lots of brush hides the bikes and the cars from each other until the last minute or last 10 yards of distance. Yield-to-trail-users signs might be an improvement, and in any case, they are very important to be at all the intersections with the street. Six, pedestrian sidewalks and push-button blinking light crosswalk assists are good. More of these are included in the ATP and will be used. Seventh, the long row of tall eucalyptus trees in front of Nordoff High School are about three to four feet away from the sidewalk next to the highway. This is a wonderful shade and wind barrier and brings beauty to everyone who passes. Birds live and sing there. The leaves condense the fog and drip it as water into the tree roots, which allows them to thrive here. They should not be cut down. There are no electric wires or brush nearby, and the trees are alive. They are not a fire hazard. The 20 feet behind them is flat dirt, and beyond that, the school parking lot. Please leave these trees. Please complete the ATP. Using standard practices, one bike lane on each side of the highway, going in the same direction as car traffic flows, and green paint on the sidewalk is my suggestions. Ask the Ojai Valley Land Conservancy to encourage people to ride our trolley and to put a dirt parking lot within the Meadows Preserve. Ask the trail entrances to accommodate cars that would otherwise be parked on the street and cause a hazard. On Highway 150 through Ojai Downtown, please pressure walk the sidewalks. They are quite pretty when they are clean, which they are not now. A safe walking path on the sides of 150 in certain areas where there is no sidewalk would be appreciated and is part of the ATP for active participation of pedestrians. Consider creating another different piece of off-road bike and walking path trail for family recreation to connect to existing parts of the ATV, AVT, I'm sorry, OVT, for a later time as a separate project. It might go along Descanso Avenue behind Bonds to Valerio Avenue and through the high school by the parking lot on this wide strip of flat dirt that is at the south side of the row of trees around the ballfield and into the Meadows Preserve. The ATP, if slightly modified, no junk, only paint on the roadway, could be given the go-ahead soon. Finding somewhere else to park some of the cars instead of on the side of the roads would make things safer for everyone. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carolyn.
Do I need to give my address?
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Do I have to ignore signal? Thank you.
Much appreciated. Next, we have Ron Solazano.
Righty. Thank you so much, members of council. My name is Ron Solazano, and I am the regional librarian for the Ojai Valley. Tonight, I just wanted to provide you with another quick update on the operations over at the Ojai Library. First, I want to begin by saying a reminder to everybody that the Ojai Library is currently open for our full seven-day-a-week schedule. Customers are able to access our collection, and more and more of our typical programs are returning to meeting in person at the library. We continue to comply with all state and county guidelines relating to COVID safety, which means that at the time, face coverings are required for all customers who are visiting us. Right now, our regular recurring programming includes our Ukulele Club, which is meeting weekly on Monday mornings at 10:00 a.m., the Shakespeare Salon, which is meeting on the first and third Mondays of the month, and the Ojai Poetry Series, which meets on the third Tuesday of each month. For our younger guests, we've resumed offering our Paws for Reading program on Wednesday afternoons, where children who are learning to read can practice by reading to a licensed therapy dog. Also, on the first Wednesday of each month at 3:30 p.m., our youth librarian Becky Rowe leads a family steam activity for ages five and up. This takes place outdoors in our secret garden, and customers can call the library to reserve a spot. The Ojai Library's Homework Center is also back in operation and is open for students through the academic year. Hours of operation for the Homework Center are 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, and 12:30 to 3:30 on Wednesday. I also want to remind everyone that we are in the middle of our One County, One Book Community Reading Program. This year, we are reading Your House Will Pay by Step Cha, and we're hosting two virtual events in the coming weeks. An online book discussion on Wednesday, October 20, and a special presentation by the author herself on Saturday, October 30. Both of these events will take place on Zoom, and registration details can be found on our website at www.vencolibrary.org/ocob. Finally, the Ojai Valley Library Friends and Foundation is hosting its annual Ojai Day Used Book Sale this coming weekend, from Friday, October 15 to Sunday, October 17. So stop by to support the library and pick up some fun new reads. That is all I have for now, and thank you so much for your time. If you have any questions about the library or what we're up to, please don't hesitate to contact me or to just stop on by. Take care and thank you.
I have two questions, if I may, that are time-sensitive.
Sure, sure.
For the book sale, do you, do people just drop off books in front of the library, or is there a procedure or a time or?
Yeah, so the, for the sale itself, that's mostly for purchasing, and you can just drop by the front of the library. That's where the sale will be going on. As far as any book donations that you might have for the library or the friends of the library, you can take those donations to the Twice Sold Tales Bookstore, which is right next door to the library. They are open seven days a week, and I believe they accept donations between 11:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m.
Okay, so you don't need any more books for the sale?
No, but they're always taking donations.
Okay. And then what was the title of the book everyone's reading?
Yeah, the One County, One Book Selection is called Your House Will Pay, and it is by--
Your House Will Pay?
Yeah, Your House Will Pay. There are copies available at the Ojai Library as well as our other locations.
Yeah, I read the last one that was everyone was reading, or maybe it was two years ago. It was really good.
Yeah, no, this one is phenomenal as well.
The surfer, the surfer one.
Oh, yeah.
It was really good.
Great one as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Next, we have Karen Snyder.
Karen, did you want to speak on the item that you wrote about?
Yeah, I did.
Because I'm gonna be pulling, I'm gonna be pulling it from the consent calendar.
Okay.
So you could speak on it then, if that's okay with the--
Is that okay, Karen?
Well, I didn't think it was related to anything on the consent calendar.
Okay, you wanna go ahead?
More of public--
Well, let's go ahead, yeah.
But I've abbreviated from what I wrote, what I sent in, because it was way too much. But so for, so for, so far, vaccine passports have not come to Ojai, but they have come to nearby Los Angeles, and from what I hear, are being strictly enforced. They have, in a way, come to Ojai with the Libby Bowl, the music festival, and how unvaccinated people couldn't come. But it kind of begs the question, if you're vaccinated and you think they're safe and effective and that you're protected, then, you know, why do you care if someone's unvaccinated? But so far, the Biden administration has mandated that the employees of businesses with more than 100 employees must be vaccinated. Did you know that there is no executive order in the federal register for this mandate? I know, because I looked. There have been only press releases. Is President Biden trying to put the onus on businesses to implement this mandate? Might he also be passing liabilities, say, for example, for wrongful termination, onto businesses and not the government? It's just a thought. So it is not inconceivable that it will be a requirement by each city to require vaccine verification to be obtained by businesses, schools, places of work, event venues, et cetera. It is unlawful, unethical, immoral, and unthinkable that private businesses can require a vaccine passport as a condition for conducting business. I could, at this point, cite several California codes and statutes that preclude this discrimination as to full and equal accommodations, et cetera, but in the interest of time, I will not cite them here. A vaccine passport system would create a two-class medical apartheid system, immunity caste system, and would further the gap in inequality, especially disproportionate numbers from some of our most vulnerable communities. This is more than just about the vaccine. It's about creating an infrastructure that controls people. It will control people's behavior, work, food, travel, health, entertainment, and free commerce. This is the gateway to surveillance, monitor, penalize, and conform. Banking and money will be added to the digital system. The central bankers have been working diligently on a digital currency. If you don't comply, you don't access your bank account. If you don't, can't access your money, you can't eat. The vaccine passport platform is not about COVID. It's about data. Any other functionality can be loaded onto that platform with no problem at all. It can be merged with your location, wherever you go, all of your medical history, which has already happened in Israel. A two-tiered society will be created where activists will be ostracized and surveilled continually. It's the end of civil society. They are trying to roll this out around the world. It has the power to turn off or on your life, to let you be engaged in society or to be marginalized. How does China keep a billion people under totalitarian regime with the social credit system that they have? This is what the vaccine passport system is, a social credit system. Dr. Naomi Wolf, who's a Rhodes Scholar, an advisor to President Clinton's reelection campaign, founder of the Daily Plout, says, "I cannot say this forcefully enough. This is literally the end of human liberty in the West if this plan unfolds as planned. It will affect both the vaccinated and the unvaccinated." Nowhere in the Constitution does it say that all of our rights can be suspended because of a disease. I ask that you pass an ordinance banning any form of vaccine passports or verification system that is contrary to the core principles of this city, county, the Constitution, Bill of Rights, and the global body of human rights doctrines. I ask that you not enact any law, requirement, guideline, or policy that would restrict an individual's right to travel or participate in commerce, religious freedom, education, et cetera, based on whether the individual has received a COVID-19 vaccine. It starts in one town, one city, one county at a time. We need to come together, both the vaccinated and the unvaccinated, both the left and the right. We can say no. I appreciate the city council and other members of our town government are trying to do what is in the town's best interest and safety, but as Benjamin Franklin said, "He who sacrifices liberty for security deserves neither." Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. All right, next, we have Cindy Jones.
Well, I don't have that much more to say, because she said it all. I'm so happy that you've taken the emergency off of the consent calendar. I'm glad you've come to your--
It doesn't mean that it's off. It means I'm gonna pull it so I can make a comment.
Okay. So you're going to make a comment tonight?
Yes.
On it?
But it's still on the consent calendar. Sorry for any misunderstanding. Pulling it doesn't mean it doesn't exist.
Okay, so what I'm asking to you to do then is take it off after tonight, after you make your comment. It doesn't need to be on there. We're not in an emergency anymore. This is a charade to keep us masked and scared into getting vaccinations. Our kids are being muzzled at school, and they're both being physically and psychologically damaged by this. I feel sorry for kids and parents that are going through this. There's a lot of people in Ojai that feel the same way. You have no idea how many unvaccinated people there are and how many people who have been forced to be vaccinated in order to feed their children or care for somebody in their family. Those people will stand with us as well. Just because they've been vaccinated doesn't mean they're not gonna be standing with us in courage, which I'd like you guys to do. It's astounding that you guys, the city council members, who are intelligent, critical thinkers, have fallen for the group think and are in total disregard for our God-given rights. I'm begging you to stop the insanity. It can begin with this town. Step up and have some courage, or at least the courage to question what's going on. There's more to this charade. Please find out what's going on. It can start here. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. David, is this on, is this public commu-- Yeah, it's just on for open communication. Okay, you wanna go ahead?
Sorry. Oh, okay. Hi. I'm sorry, I'm a little doing kind of a little bit of an impromptu, but just coming and echoing my concern for immunity passports, and I just have a few questions, and I think that are, that are relevant, and some concerns in terms of why we're implementing such a thing. Why are we implementing it when it does not stop the spread or transmission of the disease? Why, excuse me for a second, I'm a little nervous in front of you guys, wow.
You're really nice, don't be nervous.
We're at, we're as nervous. Oh, really? Oh, no, I'm, we're hard.
And the more you do this, the more relaxed children get.
Okay, good, thanks.
We'll hope to see you again.
Sir, what is your name, please?
David. David.
What's your last name?
It's Rogie.
David Rogie?
So we're kind of laboring under a bit of a false narrative. So, of course, none of us can say that COVID is not a concern or is, you know, not a health threat. Clearly, it is. We have 94% of all the people that died had an average of 2.6 comorbidities, up to four comorbidities. So we're talking about, now, I'm not downplaying the death of these people, that's unfortunate, but it gives the false idea that just anybody is equally as vulnerable to this disease. And they, what also seems to be pushing all of this is we have a PCR test, which is terribly inaccurate. So we hear about all the numbers, all the numbers. Well, I contacted a lab, and I asked them, "What is a cycle threshold that you run your PCR tests?" And they run them from 38 to 40. Now, good old Anthony Fauci said, "Between 35 and up, you're not replication competent." In other words, you pick up an old infection, dings positive. So you have a lot of people wandering around out there with a positive that are not actively sick. Gives the impression, the false impression, that we're wandering around with all these sick people. Also, Deborah Bricks of the CDC, back in 2020, when asked how they're gonna deal with the death count, went on to say that they're gonna be very liberal about their approach, that they're not gonna, basically what she went on to say is they're not gonna delineate whether they died of COVID or with COVID. There's a huge difference between the two. Hospitals are incentivized, they are paid more money for every COVID patient, so they have an incentive to put that on there. So we're starting to see a lot of false, or at least inflated, numbers. Besides the fact that the whole narrative of the unvaccinated driving this pandemic is absolutely divisive, and I'm just floored that we have an administration that would actually go out and say and divide half the country like that. I think it's really, I was blown away. So we have all these, so why are we pushing something? Why are we pushing on children who have no more of a danger of COVID than the seasonal flu, assuming that they are a healthy child? Why are we pushing vaccines on a child in many cases will be more likely to have a vaccine injury than to have any problems with COVID? There's all this up, trust the science, trust the science. I could point to article after article in The Lancet, Nature, all these medical journals that say natural immunity is as ro, is robust, durable, and lasting, and actually better than vaccination, but we're completely ignoring natural immunity. Why is this going on? How is this about health? Why is it pushing the jab no matter what? Doesn't matter. My last little bit I'm gonna say about this is, I don't know if you're familiar with the first case of compulsory vaccination in this country. In 1905, there was a gentleman named Jacobson, and they wanted to give him the smallpox vaccine again. He said no the first time he had a bad reaction to it. They took him to court, and he was found, he was compelled. He was, excuse me, I'm losing my train of thought. They found that the public interest outweighed his individual liberty. Now, smallpox had a much higher death rate, different disease. It is not a respiratory virus that jumps from species to species like the COVID, different animal entirely. Perhaps there's an argument there, but here's the rub. In 1927, there was another case called Buck v. Bell. Carrie Buck was a young lady who was what they called feeble-minded, and this young lady was, the state wanted to force her sterilization. This went to the Supreme Court, and guess what? They supported and ruled her forced, her first, her forced sterilization. And what precedent did they use? Jacobson versus Massachusetts. And Oliver Wendell Holmes, in his decision, said, "The principle that forces, the principle of compulsory vaccination is broad enough for the cutting of fallopian tubes. Three generations of imbeciles is enough." Now, that should let, like, make everybody's hair stand--
Time, I'm gonna have to wrap that up, David. Sorry, thank you.
So maybe it seems a bit hyperbolic, but I think we're in dangerous territory. I don't think that's anywhere we want to go. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Gail, do we have any public communication on Zoom?
I will check. For anybody in our Zoom audience, if you would like to speak for public communications, this agenda item only, if you would raise your hand, use the hand raise feature on Zoom, then I will call on you. Nobody's raising their hand.
Thank you, Gail. All right, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve everything?
I would like to pull item I.
Okay.
Move approval of all other items, except I.
Okay, item I is the coronavirus emergency response, and first I want to say--
Do we take care of--
Yeah, we need to get--
Let's pass everything else and then get--
You're looking at me--
No, no.
We had a motion--
Can we have a yea or nay on the consent calendar?
Except for I.
I heard a motion. I didn't hear the second.
I made the motion.
Okay, I'll second that. Randy?
So this is the vote for everything except I.
Yeah.
Okay.
And Ryan?
Yes, it's fine.
Okay. And Randy, you said yep?
Um, yes.
Okay. All right. All right, so we passed that, so--
Yeah, it's good, bye.
Yes, I, I want to first of all say that it's unfortunate that this has become so divisive, the whole topic of mandatory vaccines, passports, and all that. And I want to be clear that I, I share the consent-- And I want to be clear that I share the concerns of the three speakers about anything to do with health that's mandatory, especially in this instance. So I actually pulled it because I have a question of the city attorney. And if it's too broad of a question, perhaps it can be an agendized item. But do we actually need an ordinance when we have not put in place, the council has not put in place any vaccine mandates that I'm aware of? Like, we don't, you know, right now, it seems like individual businesses can there's county mandates with the masks, and I'm respectful of that. Distancing, washing your hands, you know, cleanliness, indoor masks, not outdoor mask. I'm not in favor of masking kids, but I'm fine to go into the store with a mask briefly, depending on the store, actually, and the crowds. But does the city council need to take some of the action that Karen Snyder, she wrote a letter to the council asking for an ordinance, but we've not? Do we need that?
So I've not seen the letter that you're referring to, but I'll run on the information I have tonight, which is, as I understand the question, it is whether the council would need to adopt an ordinance to prohibit vaccine mandates or vaccine passports.
Yeah.
In which I understand that would mean to adopt an ordinance prohibiting a private business from requiring vaccinations and/or prohibiting the city from requiring vaccinations. And this, vaccinations always means for COVID in this context, not other diseases.
Yeah.
The answer to that question is the political question. It requires a political answer. If your goal is to prohibit private businesses from imposing a vaccination mandate, then an ordinance would be necessary. And all council could do tonight would be provide direction for one to be drafted. It could not be adopted tonight because no such direction existed as of now. So it'd be direction to come back next time with a draft ordinance, which would then have to go through the process. As to whether that's necessary or not, that turns on what the council majority finds is the appropriate level of response to the COVID-19 pandemic. I would note that at present, the city as an institution has not imposed a vaccination mandate. It is, it has, as to its employees, asked each employee to certify whether they are or not vaccinated. But it has not required the answer to that question to be one way or the other. I believe most, although I won't ask for the precise number, I believe most of the city's employees are vaccinated against COVID. The city as an institution has not taken other actions to mandate vaccines in other contexts. So there's no direct necessity for it to accomplish the goal that's stated. But if the goal is as to private businesses, then an ordinance would be necessary. Although I would want an opportunity to assess the enforceability of that as private businesses generally do have a first member I could choose who to provide service to.
Yeah, and I didn't even have that in mind. I'm not, I'm not yet uncomfortable with private businesses. The Art Center is requiring that people be vaccinated. But I'm watching very closely the trend, you know, where is this leading to? I'm following the saga in Los Angeles and the police chief will not enforce the mandate, he said.
One correction I could, if I may, as you probably are, I'm also city attorney for a city in Los Angeles County and follow that closely there. It's not the police chief, it's the sheriff.
Sheriff, sorry.
The elected sheriff, Sheriff Vinoaiva, has announced that he will not enforce as a criminal matter vaccine mandates in LA County. I expect a lawsuit to be filed about that. We'll see where that goes.
Yeah. Okay, thank you for the clarification. I'm going to think it through. Thank you.
Mayor Sticks, I have a couple of things I'd like to say. I really appreciate the people coming tonight because it is time to open this debate. It's time. And I think, and I might give an example of why I think it's time. The CDC has now stated for the record officially something that they were slow to acknowledge. And that is that the vaccines, the mRNA vaccines neither prevent transmission nor infection. This is categorical statement from the Centers for Disease Control. The assertion is that it reduces hospitalization rates, the strength of the infection, the consequences of the infection. And so I think we're in a different situation where if we're in our, if we're in a situation where the official government position now is that these vaccines are therapeutic only and not prophylactic. And you think through that, it seems to indicate that we are moving from a pandemic to an endemic situation. And the public policy with respect to an endemic environment is very different from a pandemic environment. I don't see how we can consider a situation where vaccines are acknowledged to be only therapeutic in the face of other therapeutic measures such as monoclonal antibodies, monoclonal antibodies, where we have to start thinking about how to basically how to learn to live with this as an endemic environment. I want to also point out something that hasn't been reported very much in the United States. And that is that a number of nations, primarily Scandinavian, have recently suspended or limited the use of the Mordenna vaccines on young men, young teenagers, precisely because the public health authorities in those countries said they're concerned that the risk of side effects from the vaccine in that particular age cohort is greater than the risk of infection from COVID. So all these things open up the need for debate, honest and respectful debate on different points of view in terms of how we move from pandemic to endemic. And I think that whereas we're not taking any actions tonight, I want to say that I appreciate that I think we're moving towards having this discussion about how best to move forward. So I appreciate the opportunity for opening the debate.
I think, Bill and I will likely make a future agenda recommendation at the end of the meeting so that we can have a public discussion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on to number two. Public hearing. And it is the adoption of the 2021-2029 housing element update, including revisions provided by the city council in response to comments received by the California Department of Housing and Community Development. And this is the third of three meetings. And I'd like to thank staff for making this happen because it's been tough. Yep.
Eric, just a point of order, did we motion to approve the pulled item?
We should do that. Yeah, can we have a motion to approve the pulled items? Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
Their motion? Do you want to make that motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Do you have a second?
I'll tell you what, I'm going to, and I know this, people may not understand my second, but we are in a situation, we don't have our own health department, so we're subject to county health. And we have to follow what, unfortunately, what, you know, sometimes we've taken issue at times with what county health does. So whereas I think it's appropriate that we open this debate, I think it's also appropriate that we don't get into a difficulty with county health, so I'm going to second it.
And I'll, if I could just add, I know there's a motion, but this item, the point of this item, which allows us to kind of act if an emergency is needed. We don't have any existing city executive orders at this moment. We don't have any plans to put any executive orders into place. What this allows us to do is react quickly if something changes quickly, which we have done.
We have lifted a number of things already.
And when restaurants have been closed, we were able to open outdoor dining and buy signage and things like that without having to come back to council and get budget approval. So I know, I think a lot of people don't understand maybe the nuance of it, but this allows us to act quickly if something changes and we need to.
Well, arguably, we did not pass this tonight. Technically, all the outside dining variances from current city code would have to immediately be lifted.
Not tonight, I'll note on that front, because the emergency declaration continues in place until affirmatively lifted or it's expiration. And that item is not tonight's item because it was extended last meeting.
Okay, this is receive and file an update. Okay.
But as James noted, it is to direct the manager to continue taking action as needed to deal with the emergency, which at this time is essentially not a lot-
We have no orders, we're not anticipating any.
Okay, well, I stand corrected. But I think your point's well taken, that there's some nuanced issues in terms of as we move, as I stated, from the pandemic to an endemic situation. We want to do that in a stepwise and considered fashion.
Yep, be able to buy signage, things like that if we need to.
So I'm going to second for that reason.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. So could we have a roll call, please, Gail?
Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Mayor Sticks?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Wyrick?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, now we will move on to number two, the adoption of the housing element. So would you like to give us a presentation, James, please? Thank you.
Yes. Yes, thank you. And as you mentioned a moment ago, this is the third time, third consecutive meeting we brought the housing element forward. We were trying to bring it back several times to get feedback. And we got some feedback from both council and the public at the September 14th meeting, brought it back with some modifications, got some more feedback on the 28th and brought it back today for adoption. The state deadline for our Southern California region for adoption of a housing element is October 15th. So we are here today prior to the deadline to get this adopted or to stay in compliance. I want to start by noting, I think one of the big things was, we had originally planned our general plan update to coincide with this timeframe so that we would be able to have our full general plan update and have the housing element sync up with that general plan update. When COVID hit and we couldn't have our in-person public workshops, we postponed the general plan update about six to 12 months. And we started now having some of those workshops virtually. But unfortunately, the state deadlines never moved. So that's why, just to be, you know, transparent, that's why the general plan update is not lining up with the housing element at this point. But we were able to have the first few workshops virtually. We took that feedback. We had multiple planning commission meetings. We brought that to council, we got feedback, and now we are coming back. So what's before council? I won't get into it completely because I think I gave a 50-minute presentation at midnight a couple of weeks ago. And I won't do that again. But but we have the revised housing element with that feedback. The housing element is one of the seven required elements in a city's general plan. It essentially helps the city plan for meeting its share of regional housing needs. We're in the Southern California region, which has a large share of housing needs. But Ojai actually has a, was able to get a reasonable number of about 53 units appointed to it or allocated to it. So this document will help us plan for meeting those needs. And it also helps set goals, objectives, and policies for housing. And it's actually an interesting read. It identifies all the different conditions, the demographics, and the Ojai housing conditions within the document as well. So this document does those things. It makes some corrections and adjustments from the prior version, such as removing the city hall site from the affordable housing overlay, which the city hall site has a deed restriction and can't be used for affordable housing. So it corrects some things like that. It includes some of the other revisions we've mentioned over the recent council meetings. And at this time, we are recommending that the city council adopt this housing element. And our plan would be that as we continue with the public outreach and the general plan process and we get feedback from that, that we would also plan at that time, about a year from now, to make some revisions to the housing element that'll be a little bit more analytical. But we are recommending adopting this version of the housing element to meet the state deadline and to make kind of the, you know, the interim improvements and corrections to it. So happy to answer questions. We have a presentation. I don't think we need to give it, but I can always do that if desired. But with that, we are recommending adoption and I'll turn it back over to the mayor.
Thanks, James. Bill?
I have a process question. So as I understand it, the process is that if we adopt this tonight, it gets submitted to HCD, Housing and Community, the state agency with oversight, then they enter into a, they do a review and comment period.
Yep.
And during that review and comment period, this question's arisen, I've heard it from a couple of people. I assume under certain parameters, we're able to make additional changes or comments if, based on those comments that we may get from HCD or other things that we may come across that we may have missed. In other words, the submission doesn't fix it in stone, is what I'm trying to get to.
Council can make changes, both in response to HCD's comments that come in and additional changes as desired by council. And then it goes through another round of adopted by council as revised and then back to HCD. And I'll note, depending on how the comments come in, we may not want to accept some of those comments from the state.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have, first of all, I'd like to thank staff for all the work that went into this report. It's thorough, it's comprehensive. I don't know if it identifies the real problems that are facing the community of Ojai. But I did ask the same question that Bill did regarding, is this set in stone if we adopt it tonight or we move it forward? And I was given the answer of no, it's not. Because there's a lot of concerns in this community about affordable housing and how we can achieve more of it here, or even workforce housing, or just a lot of concerns about even the age of our housing. But so I'd be willing to move along with this tonight, knowing that we can amend it down the road. And I guess my last question about amending something of this nature is even if it is passed nine months from now, can we still, do we still have the opportunity to approach it and reamend it? And if we did so, would we have to go through the same process of sending it to the state, having all of the public comment timeframes and things of that nature?
Yeah, we can update it. We can continue to update it. It would have to go through the state because at the end of the day, the state has to certify it. But the the process, the process to do an update would not be as burdensome as the process was to do the full, you know, we've just spent, you know, what, four to five months completely rewriting the housing element and fine tuning it. It wouldn't be to that level. It would be similar to what we just had where we sent a draft to HCD. They sent some comments to us. We now are sending back revisions addressing those comments. So it could be done relatively simply.
And Mayor, one more question. Can we have Matt explain to the public, because I think this is important, that most people don't understand RENA and RENA numbers and what RENA is. And in fact, that's probably one of the problems that is with this report is if you go by the RENA numbers, they're saying that all we need to build for this community is 15 of low-income housing. And we would, we'd be great, we'd be perfect. We, it's all we need here is 15. So people need to understand that that's not accurate and that can't be reflective of this community and what we see and what we need for workforce housing or affordable housing. So I think we need to explain RENA again. And I think we need to explain the overlay process, how you went through it, if you can, quickly, just so that, again, there's an understanding that as we go through this process and we identify properties in the community, it doesn't, it means that they are buildable properties or deemed, in fact, I'll let you to go at it.
So I'm happy to take a first, start off on that one. So the RENA process, RENA stands for Regional Housing Needs Allocation. And all the practitioners in it call it RENA. It's a state system by which the State Department of Housing and Community Development takes a look at the eight-year planning cycle. The current one is 2021 through 2029, and assesses how much growth in housing, i.e. how many new housing units need to be built to accommodate both the expected growth in the state's population and the existing unmet housing need. And that includes both persons who are unhoused, but also persons who are housing insecure, meaning they're staying on a friend's couch or they're living in an apartment they can't afford, or otherwise. living in an apartment they can't afford, or otherwise, the expected need for new housing units. The state then divides that across the regions, which are the associations of government. So that's Southern California Association of Government, San Diego Association of Government, Bay Area Associations of Governments, larger sub supra regional groups. Those are divided. SCAG receives an allocation of 1.3 million housing units that need to be planned for across the Southern California region. SCAG then goes through a process to divide that across the cities within the jurisdiction. We're one of 150 odd cities in SCAG, and we received an allocation of 54 units, of which 15 is designated very low income affordable. And what that means is not that all we need to build is, Councilmember Haney noted, is 15 units and we're good. It means that our state requirement to zone for is 54 units total and 15 of very low income affordable housing units. That's a significantly reduced number from the past cycle when our allocation was 350 something, which reflected greater involvement by the council, commission, and staff in the SCAG process, so that our constraints and our size was understood. It, the obligation is to RENA is for the city to zone for that amount of housing, and the city has done so through the proposed affordable housing overlay zone. The overlay zone provides that for the designated list of properties, it's about a dozen, notwithstanding or forgetting the existing zoning, an overlay zone allows for housing to be built on those sites under certain rules and requirements if the housing has a sufficient amount of affordable units, roughly 25% affordable, although it varies slightly by site. And the intention is to create a separate process outside the existing robust process to allow for affordable housing projects that have enough qualifying affordable housing. And by qualifying affordable housing, it meets three triggers. One, the right kind of units at the right level of income affordability. Two, that those units are affordable for 55 years by deed restriction. And three, that the other requirements for that particular site have been met, which vary slightly with height or setback or bulk massing, et cetera, design standards that are specified in the element. If all of those things are met, then that affordable housing development goes through a streamlined process and allows the housing to be built. And the obligation from RENA is to zone for it. City has chosen to do so using the affordable housing overlay zone. But it is not the end of the conversation regarding providing for adequate, safe, affordable housing in the community. And that's where the council has the power to amend the element over time to reflect additional housing opportunities, including adding new sites to the affordable housing overlay as sites come up or hit the consciousness that it makes sense to look at, and continuing other housing programs, including looking at 408 Montgomery Street, city-owned land for about an acre and a half or so that has existing project on the table, and other opportunities that may arise for promoting housing.
Thank you, Matt.
Thanks, Matt. And just a quick question to confirm, according to the state, affordable means you can make up to $120,000 a year.
Yeah, affordable is is subdivided into three categories, moderate income, low income, and very low income. And the moderate income of income level is 120,000.
Okay.
And the low income is 70,000, and very low income is 50,000.
The station here is up around 33 or 36,000.
36,000. I'm running off them.
For a family of four.
Yeah, a family.
And and these numbers are set as percentages of the county median income. And Ventura County's median income in the last reporting period was $96,000 a year. And that's reflecting that's where those numbers derive from. But as noted, they're not exactly low income folks, 100,000 a year.
Affordable for whom? Right. Any other questions? Okay.
I have I have questions, but they can wait.
Okay, let's go ahead. Let's go ahead and open the public hearing. We have one public comment from Bill Miley.
Thanks, James.
Good evening. The record, my name is Bill Miley. As you might assume, I support this revised and finely tuned version of our 2021-29 housing element, which is going to be part of our new general plan. Lots of folks have worked on this with central management and drafting by our planning department. Our planning commissioners especially deserve recognition for their many hours of energy and focus. I want to mention that throughout the document, more important, cooperative activities and energies have been stated, bringing in agencies and organizations from throughout the valley to work together. This is to be commended. It's really good. I have an add-on, though, I'd like to say about the affordability income guidelines that you just spoke about. People who families who might have 110,000, this is all based on the median income of the county, which right now is 97,000. It's a percentage of that. So it's all dependent on the number of people in the household. You can't have two people in the household earning $120,000. You have to have more than five. So two people might be have an affordable income that would make them eligible if they had 30 to 40,000. So I don't want anybody to walk away thinking that people with $100,000 can be eligible for affordable income unless they have lots of family members, folks. And that's where the burden is. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Miley. Any public comments on Zoom, Gail, on this item?
Let me check. Somebody just had their hand up, but it went back down. If anybody who is in our Zoom queue who would like to speak on this item, if you can raise your hand, use the hand raise function, and I will call on you. Nobody's raising their hand.
Okay, thanks, Gail. All right, we'll close the public hearing and move on to discussion.
Mayor Sticks, one person just raised their hand.
Okay, thank you, Gail.
Okay, this is Mona Burt. Mona, if you're there, if you can unmute yourself, you can go ahead and speak.
Okay. Hi. I was wondering, you were talking about the I just got here to the meeting. So but I would, I am low income. And and so with the affordable housing, that is still not affordable for a lot of people. And it's getting really hard for for people to survive. And I just really wish something would would happen, you know. So anyways, that's really all I have to say. I know there's a huge difference. There's a huge difference between affordable housing that is really not affordable and and low income housing. So anyways, thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mona. All right, now we'll move on to discussion.
I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve the adoption of the sixth cycle, including revisions in response to the HCD comment letter and revisions to the documents as part of a attachment.
I'll second.
Great. Maybe the roll call, please, Gail?
Mayor, I have a couple more comments before we do this. And can I make them after we after the motion? After the vote?
Okay. All right, roll call, please, Gail.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Sticks?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
So I spent the whole weekend reviewing this. In fact, I was I spent so much time on it, going online and looking at other communities. You know, we are, we have some problems here. And and this housing element doesn't address them. It kind of sugarcoats them. So I just want to just make some brief comments into the record here that I thought about over the weekend. And and some of it is in our packet and package, and some of it is my opinion. But most of it, I believe, is real. Most of the housing stock in our community is 50 to 60 years old, if not older. I live in a 70-year-old home. My home value on today's market is over $1 million. Most owners and renters in our community are over the age of 55, and those 60 and older probably lived on a fixed live on a fixed income. Since the growth management plan was initiated in the 70s, not only has it reduced the number of people living in Ojai, but it has also been a major deterrent to housing construction. We had only one permit last year for a single-family dwelling. I didn't bother to ask the the planning director how many in the last 15 years, 20 years, 30 years, or even 40 years. But but we have a housing crisis here in this community. It's clear to see. We are tied into a system of state mandated rules, which have you to believe that we only need to build 15 low, very low family dwellings to meet our affordable our affordable housing needs. We have a rising home value crisis, which means if you own a home in Ojai, God bless you, as it increases in value. But if you do not own a home in Ojai, you more than likely will never own a home in Ojai due to the rising costs of our inflated values. Because of these inflated prices and the folks who can afford to buy here, we will no longer be the Ojai which we all love and we all care for and we all want. But we will become the next Montecito. We see that happening already. We become the next Santa Barbara. And heaven forbid if we become the next Orange County. And I hear that more often from anyone and everyone that I meet on the streets about affordable housing in this community. And that's the the difference, the differential between the people who have and the people who have not. We have multiple people who own multiple rental properties, who have kept the rents below market value. And you know, to that, I say, thank you. But here's the problem with that. When one of their children needs that rental property, or they can see that they can make more money by evicting you and remodeling it and then getting today's market value, what does that do to the person who's been renting for 10 years or five years or 15 years from you? That puts them on the street, and it puts them having to rent in today's market. Some folks who live here think ADUs, ADUs, or tiny homes on wheels are the panacea to our affordable housing. It increases density to our compacted living conditions. It provides no rules regarding parking. Most importantly, it has no affordable requirement associated with them. ADUs or tiny homes on wheels are not going to be affordable affordable housing. They will be housing that bears the market value of today, unless you're a a really, really conscientious individual and are doing this for the betterment of your community. The last thing I want to state is the conditions of our community are housing. You know, we talk about affordability here, and we talk about the fact that we're not building homes. So what are we doing with the housing stock? Well, as we sell it, it gets repaired and it gets upgraded. But what about the folks who can't upgrade their home? You know, asbestos, lead paint, old gas appliances, ungrounded electrical wiring, I had that in my house, wood burning fireplaces. You know, this list goes on and on. We ask our service workers to commute long distances because we have no workforce housing, yet adversely affects our air quality as they commute from outside Ojai into Ojai. We have so many problems that this housing element does not address. So I'm going to motion tonight, when this is over, when we seek new agendas, that we put together, we agendize, first of all, affordable housing in this community. And before we get through the general plan update, that we put together some type of a community ad hoc committee, and we address this community, and we address the needs of this community. Because the housing element does not do that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Randy. And I just want to add, as we know, the the solution is rent stabilization and a living wage for people. So with those two, people can afford to live with that without that. It's tough. So appreciate that. And just to confirm, the general plan update, the next meeting will probably be January when we'll be talking about this, James?
We're trying, we're planning the next big public workshop for either, we were trying to do end of December, but because of the holidays, we're thinking January.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I'd like to respond to Randy. Randy, thank you. I agree with 99% of what you said. I'm I'm living through it. My little shack was just sold for close to $1 million. It's it's really a teardown, but it's going to be remodeled, and the rent will probably double or triple. And I am, I may be joining the people that are living out of a storage shed, which is in District Four. Half kidding, half kidding. But 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 because, and that's why I'm so I'm acutely aware of the problem. I'm living the problem. I'm seeing it. I'm listening, just as Randy is listening. When we get to the tiny houses, I want to, I'll make the case that we've never said that this is a panacea, so I disagree with that. And when you said an affordable housing committee, I hope you really mean a low income housing committee. That's all. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to number three. I'm number three. Adjustment to users' regulatory fees, the minor temporary use permit application fees. So any presentation on that, James?
Yeah, I'll give a very brief one. Thank you. In a in a nutshell, when we adopted our new fee schedule a couple of years ago, we, one of the things we have noticed since then is that temporary use permits tend to be, I think, higher than or more more expensive than most people expect. Our temporary use permits, which are permits for things like temporary events, concerts, festivals, fairs, arts and crafts exhibits, holiday events like the Christmas tree lots, those types of events, our our fee for those is $450 as a base fee. And then if because of the the fee and the application is somewhat complicated, it can actually be more than that. And so we've just noticed over time that people with smaller events, things like a car wash for a softball team, the, we recently had a high school youth fundraiser at a storefront on 334 East Ojai Avenue. You know, small events like that that don't really impact the community or impact parking, that they come in for a permit and can't believe that those permits, you know, are $450 or more, depending on the circumstances. They also, for something simple like that, you know, are frustrated that there is a pretty hefty application requirement. And so we've been, you know, kind of taking that feedback and and looking at it with with fresh eyes. And we looked at what some other cities do, and that's included in the packet. There's a table. And we did find that most cities around us have a some sort of minor permit, minor event permit, minor special event permit. There's a couple of different names. And they're typically around $200 versus $400. And so as we started to see that that was common in other areas, and I think most people would agree that in Ojai, we expect, we expect to have more of these types of events. And in in the past, we we expect to have more of these types of events and, and in the past, we, um, in past years, we've said that we would encourage these types of events. Um, and so we wanted to bring this back, bring it up to council and recommend creating a, a minor TUP that would be a reduced fee of two hundred and twenty-five dollars fixed fee and would be a simplified, essentially one-page application. If the event is minor enough, it's a checklist, uh, the person comes in, pays, pays a much lower fee and hopefully gets a permit that they would be what, what we'd hope versus right now, a TUP can take several days. A, a standard temporary use permit could take several days to process. So, um, so we're bringing that forward with that recommendation to create that fee and to create that minor temporary use permit for very small events. Um, and again, you know, some examples of what would be a minor TUP, uh, temporary use permit would be things like the softball team, car wash, a youth fundraiser, uh, the, uh, things like that. Major TUPs would still be, um, things like the Christmas tree farm that, you know, takes up a parking lot and, and will impact parking and traffic, uh, things like that. Um, uh, so, so we are recommending, uh, creation of the minor temporary use permit and we have recommended the fee be set at two hundred and twenty-five dollars fixed fee for those minor temporary use permit categories.
Thanks, James. Any questions, Bill?
A couple. Uh, uh, Mr. Vega, uh, on page, uh, three dash two at the top, it says typically staff spends approximately three to four hours of total time to process these temporary use permits. I assume that is in the minor category that you're talking about?
Uh, so that
Is that overall?
That was for the standard temporary use permit right now.
Okay.
It would, because the, it's one application regardless of what kind of event.
That's just an average overall of them.
So they have to submit plans. They have to submit all these things, which when somebody shows up to do a youth fundraiser, they're, you know, the, the justifiably say, I have to bring plans for the building.
Right. That's my, kind of my point.
Yep.
Is that, that, I was trying to get to that point. You just made it for me. This three to four hours is, is, some of that's just driven by maybe some requirements that really don't, shouldn't be there.
Correct, correct.
Therefore, it's not going to take three to four hours.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yep.
And I, I just, you know, I, I, uh, I'm completely in favor of this, uh, along with reducing that kind of requirement for something that's truly temporary. If, if anything, I would say go lower than this for something that's truly minor.
Yeah, and we, we wrestled with that. We were trying to estimate really with the minor ones, we've seen how much time we do have to spend on those in walking people through the process. So we tried to find a fair fee, but, um, you could see when we looked at other cities, most are in that range. There are a couple of cities that do charge less, but most are in that two hundred dollar range.
Just in, I'm in favor of where it is. I would, if other people on the council were willing to go lower, I'd go lower, but you know, I'm not going to make a big deal about it. I also want to make a point that I, I, this has been an issue over time. On page three dash three, there's a statement as noted above for the, in the first paragraph, end of paragraph. For these reasons, as noted above, the fee for a typical temporary use permit is four hundred and fifty dollars plus two hundred and twenty-five an hour, which seeks to recover staff time. You know, when we last, uh, reformed and revised the master fee schedule, this issue came up. Where the four fifty was not, was meant to cover the first two hours, not be just a base rate and then you charge hourly on top of that.
Correct.
And I know that, uh, people coming to, that was my understanding. If I'm mistaken, then I stand to be corrected. But this has been a problem, I believe, because I thought the four fifty for the typical was meant to cover that first two hours of work, not to be a rate that you then start charging on top of that as you, on hour, on the fir- first inception of time.
Yes.
Because remember, we required invoices.
Mm-hmm.
That we're supposed to show time.
Yep.
And I know that staff tends to interpret it this way, but I don't think that was council intent.
No, and, and the way we've enacted it is, is what you're describing where the four fifty is the first two hours.
Right.
So if it's three hours, it's six seventy-five.
Right.
We just, you know, and maybe it's just the shorthand way we've been describing it, but we'll, we'll, we'll try to clarify.
But I, I think that does require some clarification and maybe some, uh, some, uh, direct, some direction to staff, because I think they tend to interpret it as uh, walking in the door is four fifty and then it's an hourly on top of that. And I don't think that was the intent as you agreed with.
Well, we'll make sure we clarify that. Well, maybe we can add some, you know, some notes to the application and things like that.
We specifically said anybody can ask for an invoice
Mm-hmm.
of, of, in an itemized resource, not, not just a, you know.
That was, that, that was a major component of the master fee adoption, right?
If you have some accountability in that. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Another question. Go ahead, Susan. I was noticing that in Fillmore, they, uh, it's fifty dollars to have a block party, but that's only if it impacts tra- we want to encourage these kind of vibrant neighborhood activities, but it's only, that's only required if, if it impacts the traffic, right? You, you don't need a permit to throw a party for your neighbors.
The permit, I believe, although I haven't reviewed Fillmore's code closely, is tied to street closure.
Yeah.
To request to close the street, then, then some city approval is required. It's distinct from simply throwing a party.
That, that makes sense.
Correct, yeah.
And there's still plenty of activities that don't require a permit. Thank goodness. Garage sales.
Some cities have started that, but yeah, we don't anticipate.
Go ahead, Randy.
Um, Suzie, are you done?
Yes, thank you.
So I just, I'm, so we're going to receive public comments hopefully. And then it says here, consider adoption of a resolution and we have a resolution before us.
Yeah.
But I think we have more discussion on this item. So am I, uh, is, is that what I'm sensing here? That we're going to send it back to staff for more clarity? Unless we can get clarity tonight, but, um, I guess one of the concerns that I have is this now becomes discretionary.
Yeah, yeah.
So I correct, we have a schedule in the back of our packet. And what we're moving to is someone submitting a permit that's discretionary by request to, um, like Suzie just said, maybe have a block party. Or, you know, something of, of that nature, a parking lot sale or a car wash or things of that nature. So, again, who's making that decision? It's going to the planning director?
So yeah, what we're, what we're planning to do is the next step is, once we have the approval to move forward with this, we're going to create an application that will actually list what events qualify for a minor TUP and we'll bring that back to council just on consent for approval, uh, and that can always be pulled and modified. But we're planning to bring that and it would list, you know, the types of events that will qualify for a minor, which are anticipated to be ones that don't impact parking or have a substantial impact on the community. And then, uh, anything that's not on that list would require the major TUP. Or, you know, standard TUP.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, well, go ahead and open the public hearing now. We have, uh, Larry Steingold, please.
I fully back your lowering of the fees, but my concern is the process. You talk about you spend time having to explain someone the process. You shouldn't have to. It's a form. How many hours? Where is it going to be? This taking so much time and effort to explain forms goes back to directly to the forms. No one can understand anything, so you got to have a consultant. You've got to have an analyst. You've got to bring in more people. We've got to hire outside consultants. This is idiotic on everything. The state tells you to jump, you got to jump. Why? And this goes directly to last, the last time SB nine, which I don't know if I can say. Um, but the city council should publish on their website every law that is proposed at the state level that takes away powers from the city. Because every time they do something, you lose something, which means we give up something to them. And this is getting out of hand. I mean, it's one size fits all for housing. Yes, we need housing. Yes, we do. Fine. Great. Where? You've only got so much land. They want to start chopping up house lots. Okay. A hundred thousand dollars gross income is considered low income for a family of five? That's gross income. How about net income? With inflation, it doesn't matter. No one's going to have any discretionary income. Anyway, thank you very much, but make the process simple. You want to have a, a part, a block party? Fine. Boom, boom, boom. Done. You'll get a response tomorrow. Twenty-four hour turnaround. Charge them a deuce. Charge them a hundred. Don't charge them at all. What difference does it make? This is what you people do with the city. You're our bunsman. You're our bunsman. We pay taxes. We got to keep paying fees. Thank you.
Thanks, Larry. We'll see you at the block party.
Sounds like we have our first permit.
Um, Gail, any public comments on Zoom?
Let me check. Thank you. Any of our people that are in the Zoom queue, if you are here to speak on this agenda item, uh, this agenda item only, if you would use the raise hand function and raise your hand on Zoom so that I can see it, um, I will call on you. And no one's raising their hand.
Thanks, Gail. Okay, we'll close the public hearing and move on to discussion.
If no one else is going to make a motion, I will.
Go for it, Bill.
Discussion, I mean.
We all want it.
Well.
Well, we can discuss after the motion.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion. I'm going to make a motion, see where it goes. That we, um, adopt the resolution, um, directing, uh, a, um, a fee, reduced fee for minor temporary use permits of one hundred dollars for minor events with the further direction of staff who come back to us with a one-page maximum expedited, uh, form for, uh, such temporary use permits.
I'll second that.
All right, may we have the roll call, please, Gail?
Mayor Sticks? Yes. Councilmember Haney?
Uh, you know, I'm, I'm for it. I'm just not clear on what I'm for. That makes sense?
Very honest.
Um, I, I heard a reduction in, in, um, you know, before I vote on a reduction, what I want to see is a list of all of the areas that we could reduce our fees to a hundred dollars too. So before I vote on that, um, so I'll abst- I'll abstain until the next council meeting and I can see the report brought to us, brought back to us by staff.
Okay, well, finish the roll call.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Wyrick?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Gail. Hey, we will, we'll move on to number four. Introduce an ordinance to create a two-year pilot program for inclusion of tiny house regulations into the accessory, accessory dwelling unit section of the Ojai Municipal Code. Your presentation?
Yes, thank you. So, uh, this may sound familiar. We've, uh, discussed it, um, several times, uh, recently and then dating back to twenty eighteen. So I won't go through absolutely everything, but I'll give a little bit of, um, background and then an update to where we are. Um, back in August of twenty eighteen, the planning commission reviewed and recommended a movable tiny ho- home ordinance. On August twenty-eighth of twenty eighteen, the city council reviewed that ordinance. I just realized the bell's ringing. I'll give that a second. I know. Three minutes early, like, uh.
Yeah, it's still three minutes early. I panicked and then I remembered it's three minutes.
We're going to agenda, we're going to agenda that.
Talk to the civic association.
Yes, but, um, so on August twenty-eighth, twenty eighteen, the city council originally reviewed this ordinance and chose not to adopt it at that time.
I wouldn't say that. The majority chose.
The majority chose not to adopt it at that time. On April thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, the city council, uh, as part of Gold's discussions and some other things, discussed the need to address uh, concerns with the city's housing stock and at that time listed programs to return to council this year. One of those programs, uh, potential programs was the return of the tiny home ordinance. Uh, but in the context of a two-year limited pilot program with ten tiny homes allowed per year for twenty title, twenty total tiny homes over two years. So tongue twister. Um, the city council, uh, voted direct, to direct staff to, um, develop that ordinance. To, um, to allow a movable tiny hu- house uh, to be accessory to a principal residential dwelling unit, just like an ADU, if it meets the following criteria. Uh, must be licensed and registered with the DMV, must meet NC standards similar to an RV, must be towable or on a towable frame, uh, and designed not to move on its own power. Must be appropriate size for public highways, must have at least a hundred fifty square feet of first floor living space. Must include living, sleeping, eating, cooking and sanitation areas. Must be designed to look like a conventional building, not an RV. Must be sited behind the principal dwelling unit, uh, behind the, the main house and before the rear setback line. Uh, in other words, um, behind the house and not in front of the house. Uh, must be placed on a permitted, permanent foundation with the wheels removed or with leveling and, or support jacks to prevent movement. Um, have a maximum floor area at four hundred and forty square feet. Uh, must have an all-weather surface pedestrian path that would be from the street to the main entrance of the tiny home. Must have at least eighty square feet of exterior decking and subject to the same utility requirements such as, uh, sewer as a typical ADU would be, would, would need to meet. Uh, the ordinance also includes a prohibition on excessive movement, which means that the tiny home can't move uh, more than one time each year. Uh, and, um, and so we, that ordinance was brought back to the city council. It was reviewed and the city council asked staff to look at three issues further. Uh, and, and so this report in tonight's agenda looks at those three issues. Those three issues were fire hardening options, affordability, uh, and dense, density, but, um, related issues. Uh, and so the report gets into each of those in a little more depth. Uh, I'll keep, try to, try to keep it a little more brief. For fire hardening, uh, we've added the NFPA standards, which have some additional, um, requirements. And we've also included a requirement for class A roofs. That's the same type of roof that a, you know, traditional stick-built house in Ojai, Ojai, it would be required to be to, to include now. So we've recommended including that. So that's been added to the ordinance since the last time it was looked at as an additional fire hardening requirement. Uh, regarding affordability, we looked further into any potential rent control options. Uh, however, uh, essentially, the options that we've identified would not be likely to be enforced. Um, and so we noted, um, that, uh, as we had discussed prior, you could put a rent control requirement on the pad, but it would be very unlikely that it would actually make any, uh, impact, um, because it's just, because it's such an unlikely scenario, uh, to apply. And so we did discuss in the, um, report, uh, that there would be alternatives in alternate tiny home scenarios, but not really any enforceable options if we treat them as ADUs as we propose. Uh, and then for density, we identified some options such as limiting how many are allowed in a specific radius or limiting how many are allowed on each street. However, as we mentioned in the report, because of laws like SB nine and SB ten, which have now essentially allowed ADUs on, you know, almost any residential parcel. Uh, we noted that if we're treating the tiny homes as ADUs, anybody can have an, um, ADU. So they're really, uh, is no, uh, additional density necessarily. And so that's an option for council, but it's not, um, it wasn't identifying it, identified as an actual, like as a, uh, a necessity. Uh, and it wasn't included as a, it wasn't included in the draft ordinance. So council could, um, implement one of those limits, like saying only one tiny home allowed per street. But again, if a property wanted to get a tiny home and couldn't, they could still put an ADU on the parcel. So the density is, is, um, it's, it's kind of a, a question of what impact that would have on density. So, so those three areas are looked at closer. Uh, the, the, the end result was the ordinance was included or modified to include the class A roofs as an additional fire hardening option. Uh, and we're, that's the ordinance that is presented to council for discussion and potentially introduction tonight.
Thank you, James. Questions from council? Go ahead, Randy.
I just, uh, I think we need to clarify uh, your, your, your last comments on. I just, I think we need to clarify your last comments on, on the law regarding the ADUs and tiny homes and the conflict might arise between them.
So I think my comment isn't necessarily that a conflict would arise. It's that we were saying, when we looked into potentially limiting the density of tiny homes, the City Council can do that, but we were noting that because ADUs are now allowed, you know, is by right the appropriate word? I think so, yeah. But the ADUs are allowed by state law by right, that if we're treating the tiny homes as ADUs, then a person has the right to either add an, or to add an ADU, or then if we allow these 10 tiny homes per year, they could choose to add a tiny home as the ADU. And so we were saying the density isn't necessarily impacted because the person could add an ADU if they, if they can't add a tiny home.
I see the, I see the conflict in ADUs are a right, are a right by law. And we're, and we want to consider tiny homes as an ADU.
Correct.
So therefore, and now, but, but we want to restrict the number of ADU slash tiny homes in our community. I think that's where the, where the conflict is, is where we want them to fall under the ADU ordinance, but, but to do so, we can't limit how many that we can have, because that would be limiting the number of ADUs.
I think we actually can limit the number of, if I could jump in here.
The same density requirements as ADUs that would apply.
Well, and if I could jump in with one further point, we can, my opinion is that the council, if so chose, could adopt a numeric limit on tiny houses, even if structured as an ADU, because the ADU allowance, the state minimums only apply to stick-built ADUs. We'd be going beyond the state to allow movable tiny homes on frames, eighty, as an additional type of ADU. Because it's beyond the state minimum, we don't come under that limit, under the state limit. So I think the numeric approach could be applied. The 10, currently what is it, 10 per year limit could lawfully be applied, although there's no guarantees. And two, to the density point, if the council were to adopt a no more than one tiny house per street or per block limitation, that would be legal too, again, because tiny houses are above the state minimums. But recognize that from a density perspective, if an owner was blocked by the one house, one tiny house per street limit, the second owner could still do a regular ADU. So the density is going to be the same. But we could limit, we could force it to be ADUs and not tiny houses, which to a certain extent may impose an effective limit on density, given the price differential between a movable tiny house and a typical ADU.
Right, but just if I could clarify, if that's okay, real quick, by calling them ADUs, they're under the, you can't have an ADU and a tiny home. It's treating them as ADU means it's like, it's, you know, that's your choice of how you want your ADU.
There, correct. There's two other things that are worth noting. If this council chooses to define movable tiny houses as a species of ADU, it also enables the requirement that there be a primary house, so that you couldn't have solely tiny houses on a lot, or a single tiny house on a lot. And it enables the requirement that they be replaced in the rear yard and thus not visible to the front.
Right.
Although it may still be visible to the public right of way if you have a corner lot or another oddly shaped lot.
But the same restrictions on ADUs apply.
Correct, although ADUs aren't required to be in the rear.
Any other questions?
I'm sorry, Mayor, I'm, I still see the conflict here. The conflict to me is ADUs are a right by law.
Can we, is this a question?
This is a question.
Yeah.
An ADU is a right by law, and we are classifying tiny, tiny homes on wheels as an ADU, yet we're restricting the number of tiny, of tiny homes on wheels. I, I think there's an inherent conflict there. And I don't, and I'm not trying to slow this down, but if we're going to do this, let's do this right. You don't see that there's a conflict there? That we, that we can tell one person that your ADU, quote, which is a tiny hot, tiny house on wheels, that you can't have one because your neighbor already has one? But if, but if your neighbor had an ADU, you have a right to an ADU too. Do you see the conflict? Or am I just the only one?
I think you're misunderstanding.
But I think it goes back to the state protection is only for stick-built ADUs. There is no state protection for movable tiny house ADUs.
Then why are we moving tiny homes into the ADU category?
That's the choice for council.
What's the goal there?
The, as noted, the goal, the goal in the current draft is based on prior direction.
So I'm gonna explain the goal. We're in staff question, not deliberation.
Yeah.
I'd love to answer your question.
It's to make them.
I want to try to respect the fact that we're in staff.
Any, any other questions for staff?
Yes, I have a question.
Maybe that's the question, to staff.
I just want to be crystal clear.
Here's Suzette's question.
Hey, I want to be clear. I did hear you say something about the fire hardening standards applying to regular houses. But this is, I want clarity on this question. Are all accessory dwelling units required to meet the fire hardening standards that are now in, proposed for tiny houses? Is it the same?
It's not all. I believe it's if they are certain, is it the size, I believe, is if they're a certain size?
It, there's, there's two triggers. One is size. If an ADU is above a certain trigger, then the fire, same fire hardening standards as proposed here would apply. Second is how the ADU is constructed. The reason I say how is because there are two types of ADUs. Those that involve new ground-up construction, they have to have a Class A roof on the top and the same fire hardening standards. There are also ADUs that are built within an existing structure. There's no requirement to redo the roof if you, if you're within the existing structure, provided you don't take down the roof or affect more than half the exterior walls. So that's where it's a classic lawyer's answer. It depends, it depends on the nature of the ADU as to whether the same rules would or would not apply. These, as proposed, the movable tiny houses, they're all new. So they're all being new built or newly moved into the city, hence the proposal to require those.
Okay. Let's, let's move on to public communication. We have Lynn Dorgan and Bill Miley.
Thank you. I'm so cold. I advocate for you to get heat lamps for yourselves next time. So I'm, I was at the 2018 meetings to, in support of tiny homes. I have built two tiny homes. They are both, they meet all of the qualifications that you listed off. They're both in storage, awaiting to find their home here. And it's been really frustrating. One of the, one of the comments that I've heard about the opposition to the tiny homes was that they bring a trailer trash kind of a feel to the, and that's, that's not who Ojai is, and that's not, that's not what we're presenting here. The tiny homes, they, they're of a quality and safety and innovation and desirability. And one of the things that hasn't been, since the, since the 1950s, housing has been for families, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, five-bedroom. There's, there's a big need now for housing for individuals. And if you go to like Rainbow Bridge or any of our bulletin boards, you'll see people, it's individuals looking for a place to live. And a lot of them are rent rooms, but they'd much rather have a home. And I got a little confused by the last few minutes of discussion, but it feels like it's moving in the right direction. Affordable housing units, affordable dwelling units. One thing that I wanted to be really clear about, that I don't think was clear the last meeting I was at, was you can't take a tiny home off of its trailer and set it down onto a foundation. The trailer is an integral, engineered, structured part of the tiny home. You, it's possible to take the wheels off, but it's, the way we do it is jack, have everything jacked so that it's, it's stationary. It is easy to add deck all around it or any part of it. So I just encourage the inclusion or the acceptance of moving forward with this, because I think it's really needed and really wanted. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lynn. Next we have Bill Miley.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Bill Miley. As you know, I favor modular houses and manufactured houses for accessory dwelling units. But in this case, if you're going to adopt a two-year plan, I have a few suggestions. Competition for tiny house pads to place your tiny house on is probably very high. I recently, a couple months ago, looked on Craigslist and there was only one in Northern California. The question is, what about a pad at Lake Casitas? Lake Casitas Recreation charges about $40 a night for a full hookup. And you only can do that 14 days a month. In the winter, you can do a snowbird program for six months. It charges $40 per night. That's about $1,200 a month for a pad, full hookup pad. Pads in Ojai with full hookups look like they would be very attractive to folks living elsewhere, wanting to spend time in Ojai. Price is, we don't know. There's no competition. Having a full hookup pad and buying and placing a tiny house on it and making it affordable does not seem possible unless the owner is willing to offer subsidized rent. To make a tiny house rentable for a family and probably no more than two folks, the property owner would likely have to offer a subsidy, as I just said. But maybe the city could have a joint ownership arrangement to make it affordable. Since the primary goal of adding more housing units here, tiny house units, is to create, to help create workforce housing and make the workforce housing affordable, what about a cooperative program with city government? I've suggested in the past that the city helped the property owner buy the tiny house in exchange for an affordable rent over a number of years. Afterwards, the owner would buy the city, would buy the city out and pay it back over a few years. So in summary, full pads for rent would probably get us new residents, some who want probably to work here. Pads for tiny houses would probably find, probably provide family residence, guest stays, but would likely only help our workforce if they were subsidized by, for affordability, either by the owner or through the joint city purchase plan. Affordability is the key. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Gail, any public comments on Zoom?
I'll ask.
Thank you.
For our participants, for our members of the public who are on Zoom, if any of you are here to speak on this particular item, this item only, if you would use your raise hand function on Zoom and raise your hand so that I can see you, and then I will call on you. Nobody's raising their hand.
Okay, thanks, Gail. All right, let's open it up for discussion.
The next one.
Okay, thank you.
Hillary, should I start?
Go ahead.
Do you have it? Okay, well, first of all, I think we're creating, dreaming of all kinds of problems that probably won't materialize. I, I've never said, or neither, none of the advocates have ever said that this is a panacea for the housing crisis. It addresses a need to primarily single people, possibly older women like myself. I've just finished, I've just had leased for eight years a so-called lower-income house, and she could have probably gotten $2,000, but because I fixed it up, I invested $25,000 to make it livable, so she fixed the rent at $1,650. I briefly tried to rent another house for $2,265, only because it had a larger yard for my dogs, and it also turned out to be a fixer-upper. So I would much prefer to put my stuff in storage and live in a small, brand-new tiny house. And I can assure you, like Lynn said, if you look at the bulletin board, there are so many single people just looking for a room to rent. So this would fill a need. And I do believe there are conscientious people in the community that want to rent to their friends and their family members. I, you know, perhaps there's going to be a few that want to make a buck. I don't think that's the majority. And, you know, I, I don't, I don't know why we're, we're creating so many problems for something that's just a simple pilot project with a small footprint. You know, it has, that's one of the advantages. It has a small footprint. It encourages more simple living. And that small footprint, and a question for Matt, as we go through the pilot program, if problems arise having to do with cars or whatever, we can address it as the pilot project moves along, right? We can, we can amend the ordinance. Is that correct, to address problems?
Yes, with the caveat, the council can amend the ordinance over time to address adjustments to the pilot program.
Yeah.
With the caveat that an existing tiny house likely could not be forced to leave. So if somebody is permitted, we can change, change the rules regarding their operation to an extent. We can change without question the rules regarding other applicants, but we probably couldn't remove anybody.
That's what I mean.
With a current house.
If problems come up after we do the first one or two, we don't even know if anybody's going to apply for this pilot program. We have one. Lynn, thank you. And I'm hoping my neighbor will, so I can stay in District Four. That's one way I can solve my, my housing problem. So if a problem does arise, you know, early on, we can amend it for the future ones. Correct, right? We can amend the ordinance for future, during this two-year pilot program.
Yes, with the caveat is noted.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And I hear you. And obviously, the theme tonight is housing and affordability and what that means. And while, yes, the carbon footprint is low, my big concern is how much it's going to cost. So I'm, I'm for helping people of modest means, because they are the ones who need the help the most. I'm not for feeding the Ojai gentrification machine. As currently proposed, this tiny horse, home ordinance will most likely feed this machine. We don't need more homes for people with plenty of money. These tiny homes could easily become weekend getaways for people who live elsewhere and have money. We have enough of that already. We shouldn't try to fit a square peg into a round hole by trying to move this forward via the ADU law. ADUs were mandated by the state without any rules about what people can charge for rent. If we want tiny homes to help the poor, we start fresh and write a tiny home ordinance that mandates prioritizing these, those of modest means, i.e. tiny home pads that serve very low and extremely low-income families. I believe this can be done, as this is not a state mandate, and therefore, we have considerably more latitude if we can create rules that govern tiny home pads that are our own. I'm going to hold the line here because greed, between greed and doing what is right for our community. And in the staff report on page 4-5, does say that no city, to staff's knowledge, has yet tried this path. The law is uncertain, which doesn't mean it can't happen. It just means it hasn't happened yet, because this is a, this is new. So I would suggest, this is page five of six, right here.
Page five.
It's four of six or five?
It's in the staff report at the top of page five of six or 4-5.
Okay, where it starts, applicable for situations, this law is uncertain.
So because the law is uncertain, and this is unknown territory for all of us, I would suggest a, a motion to direct staff to come back with a proposed path. I would suggest a motion to direct staff to come back with a proposed path forward to gain clarification on the law in this regard, which staff admits is uncertain.
So are you?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Again and again, over the years, we have all talked about part of addressing housing is to look at options, choices, try things. And here we have a trial program that's been thought about for a long time, crafted in a way that I think makes sense in terms of a learning experience. And while we keep talking about providing options for people, and we keep hearing from people begging us to allow this option because it would help their circumstances and their families, we keep coming up with reasons to let the perfect defeat the good. We do it again and again and again. And I just think that it's time for us to pass this. It's limited. It's crafted in a way that in discussions with HCD, Housing Community Development, they say, you know what? That's an interesting approach. And we really, you know, we're, we really think we're gonna, you know, that's, that's really something for us to consider in terms of how you're treating that as an ADU. Doesn't increase the densities. Within the overall rubric of ADUs, it allows people's options. It allows people, in a very, in a limited way, just 10 per year, for people repeatedly, over the years, really asking us to please give me this option because it will help my situation. You know, there is no, in my opinion, a way to approach something as complex as improving our housing situation by always coming up with excuses not to try things or looking for the one answer, or trying to address all the issues at the same time. I think this is well-crafted, limited trial program, addressing what people have asked us to let them do, that it would help them, and I just think it's time to move forward. So that's where I'm, that's where I'm at on this.
I'd like to hear from Ryan if he'd like to speak.
Thank you, Randy, but I don't have anything to add.
Okay, well, I'll add a little. I, I asked for all of the firehardening aspects of the tiny homes, and it seems like staff came back and met them. So I'm okay with that, as long as the rest of you are. I thought, to me, that was important. My, I, I hear the mayor and I hear her concern about affordability. I'm just, I'm just not sure how that can happen after reading the report. So I'd be, I, I, you know, part of me would be interested to find that out. The other part of me also thinks we're in conflict with, with an ADU and a, and a tiny home. I, I just think there's some inherent conflict there in what we're trying to achieve. And I think we are trying to achieve that for good reasons, to bring them into the ADU world. So again, I, I'd be interested to get a better understanding of that. Now, having said that, does that mean that we can't move this forward and still get those responses? And if we get a report back to us that says we can make them affordable, we can do that. And, and if it says we're in conflict and we may have to change a rule, I'd, I think I'd be agreeable to that. So that's where I, that's where I stand right now. I'm kind of mixed between the two. Mayor, I hear what you're saying. And I hear the frustration from my other council members. So, and right now, I'm teetering. I can go either way. So let's take it to a vote.
Opportunity to respond to the mayor, and I'm not sitting here because I'm supposed to be cold. The heater is nice and hot now. So a couple of things. In 2018, when we had these hearings, we had at least 50 speakers, including school teachers, who were wanting to rent out their house and travel so that they could stay in the, in the tiny house. When they come back to Ojai, they want, they didn't want to sell the property. They wanted to be able to keep it and rent out the large house to either, you know, to anyone or to their family. And so we don't have that number of speakers now in the freezing cold, and some people have given up, but the need is still there. The other thing I want to address is your comment about using a tiny house for a weekend getaway. First of all, we have a very strict, no short-term rental ordinance. And what we do have right now is second and third, large homes. People are buying up our housing stock. So it just seems so almost ludicrous to be concerned if people rent, someone rents a tiny house to, to use as a weekend getaway, which is legal, correct? That's legal. Right now, people can buy up two or three houses, and that's happening because they see it as an investment. My, the people that lived across the street from me, for three years, sold their house at a million-dollar profit. Okay, what is happening in Ojai, you know, that is, this is not perfect. I'd love to do what you suggest, and I think we should explore it. But we have, we have worked, in 2018, we worked on this for a whole year with Vina Lustado and Dan Sussing again, you know, people that are experts in the field. They're internationally known. We had beautiful designs, you know? And they're not here tonight to advocate, but they would like to be. Vina is traveling. So I'm all for bringing this forward tonight and then working out the glitches as we move along.
I, I hear you, Susan. I, I love tiny houses. I think they're great. My, my concern, though, is if we move forward tonight, we will lose the opportunity to actually make this, make them for very low and extremely low income. And, you know, we don't know if it'll work until we explore it. And it is really hard to help poor people because there's no money in it, and there's nobody making any money in it. So I think that the question is, do we really want to help poor people? And if we do, then let's raise the bar and see if we can. Because as, as the staff report says, the law is uncertain. We don't know. This is, again, new territory. So I, once again, I don't want to lose the opportunity to make this for extremely low-income individuals.
May I ask the city attorney the question? Are we losing the opportunity?
The council could always adopt a later requirement for affordability as structured and apply it to any permits issued after a certain date. It would be perhaps a challenge to issue a permit and then impose an affordability requirement after the permit is issued. Although I would note, I'm not sure that permits will be issued immediately as it would depend on how many applicants show up. And as noted, well, that'll depend on how many applicants show up, so there's no guarantees there. And there was a prior question embedded in Councilmember Francine's comments. It is legal to own a house or rent a house at a monthly rental and only use it on the weekends. What is prohibited in Ojai are rentals for less than 30 days. So if you rent it for weekend use, renting it five days, three days at a time, that's unlawful. But it is, it is legal to rent a house or a room or other location on a monthly basis and only use it in the weekends.
But I was also talking about people who buy second homes in Ojai just for the weekend or even just for one, one, you know, a month out of the year, the Christmas.
Yeah, that is legal as well, and I'll note, in vacation communities of a certain sort, that's not uncommon where folks will buy a house and use it once a year for about a week.
I think your microphone was off.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm on a new microphone.
Randy?
I have a question for staff, and that's the, yeah. A lot of the verbiage in here, for instance, here, the proposed, the proposed movable tiny house has been certified by a qualified third party, blah, 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 or was built to ANSI standards by sufficient evidence, the, the safety standards requirements demonstrated by sufficient evidence satisfactory to the director. So is, is our tiny homes a planning jurisdiction or a building and safety jurisdiction? Because further on, and again, it says director, and then further on, it actually includes the building official. So is it a joint venture, or how is this assigned for inspections and for guidance for people to purchase and install?
There's, there's both, and I think the optimal situation would be somebody purchases a movable tiny home that's built to NC standards, and it has the ANSI certification, and I think there's a little ANSI plate that's on the door frame. And so optimal would be the person buys it to those standards. The planning, Community Development Director confirms, make sure that it meets those standards. The building official still looks at some things like the, the site and things like that. But it would be review and approval by both of those, those parties, so.
And Mayor, I have one, one last question to staff, and that's, so, so we venture into this tiny home world. And, and in a year or two years from now, we decide it's just not a fit for Ojai. And we remove this ordinance from our books. Does that prevent, does that grandfather in the existing 10 or 20? Or does that require them to be removed?
There would be two options at the time that occurred. Option one would be they, their grandfathered or legacyed, and they may continue to exist. But we would not allow, once the tiny house is moved off, we wouldn't allow another one to come back on. Second option would be to require their removal. Requiring their removal, though, could not be done immediately. We'd have to give them an amortization period to amortize out. That is, to let them recoup the value in their investment over a reasonable amount of time. And that would have to be some number of years determined at that time.
Yeah, that's fair.
And should that be put into this ordinance now? Or, or wait until if that event happens? How does that work?
My recommendation would be to wait and see what the council decides to do in those two years. Because the council, the other option would be to, of course, continue it. In short, it's a future political decision that would be tough to predict now.
Okay.
Can I say one more thing? I just don't understand. I mean, unless you're planning to apply this same standard on all future housing, it just seems so unfair to apply it to a small footprint home that will more than likely be used for family members and, and friends. I just don't understand the double standard, unless that's your, your plan.
No, not a double standard. I mean, these are rentals. We're looking at them as rentals. And so the question is, how much will they cost? And they're not going to be below $1,000. And I'm, I'm speaking for-
But we don't know that. We don't know that. They might be free for somebody's, you know, college-age student or their grandmother.
Right, as our-
We don't know the answer to those questions.
And ADUs can be the same. What I'm saying is, we have the opportunity here to hold the line and make this for very low and extremely low-income households. So I think we owe it to-
We don't know that.
I think we owe it to our community to investigate that because it's not clear. The law is not clear. So let's find clarity and, and once again, hold the line for the poor people because there's no place to live here. So I would really like to explore that opportunity. Bill?
Yeah, I'm, I, I want to get, do a decision here. I, I understand your concern, Mayor, but I don't think that moving this program forward in any way is to the exclusion of exploring those options. And I, I certainly think it's extremely important. This is well-thought-out, includes the firehardening, allows people to have options they do not now have. And so I'm going to go ahead and just see where it goes to make a motion to approve introducing this as described in Attachment A, and see where it goes.
That's your motion?
That's my motion.
I'll second your motion.
Now, the process is, I can amend Bill's, Councilmember Yarick's motion, or I can offer a second motion?
Yeah, a motion to amend or a substitute motion, either are viable.
So I would propose a substitute motion. And it's going to be based on what staff can do, but I'd like to see us table this and bring it back after we have a finding on the mayor's concern and my concern.
Okay, I'll second that.
Ryan, are you listening?
I'm sure he is.
Yeah, I can't really help you with that, Susan. They seconded a motion.
Just want to make sure you're there.
So if I could ask for clarification of the maker of the substitute motion, it's to return with a finding regarding viability of imposing an affordable, affordability requirement for tiny house pads. What precisely are you looking for in terms of finding? I'll note that the law is uncertain reflects our best assessment of the law. Certainty comes from a court, but we'd be happy to take a deeper dive into it. Perhaps that would be the, that's what I understand, that's the request, to take a deeper dive into it. But recognize that I have no magic wand, and therefore, only a court can provide certainty. We could perhaps consult with the HCD on this precise question. They're not a court, but they are the state's arbiter of housing issues. At least, they have self-appointed themselves. Perhaps we could consult with them and, together with staffs, for the assessment. Is that what you had in mind in that?
And it's, I mean, I realize it's difficult, and helping poor people is difficult, and this is a novel program, so I appreciate that.
And mine's fairly clear, correct?
Ryan missed that second concern. Oh, yes, on the conflict between ADU and tiny homes. Okay. Yeah, we can assess that in detail as well.
Because if we are, again, if we are, we can clarify that quickly and still bring this forward, so.
Well, in that second concern, I would note, HCD there is more than self-appointed as the expert. The ADU law does grant HCD the power to review and comment, but not approve AD ordinances. So we could submit this to them for their review and comment. At least get them on the record.
Great.
How, how long do you anticipate this will take?
HCD is in the middle of reviewing all the housing elements being adopted around the state. My rough guess would be several months.
Did you say double months?
Several, several months. HCD has 90 days by law to review the housing elements. In my experience to date, they have used their full time on every development, element they've reviewed so far. 90 days, the deadline is October 15th. Most cities are meeting the deadline. Some are not. Outside, best guess, sitting right now, six months.
And if, and if we did pass this tonight, you could still do that, correct?
Absolutely. And in fact, we would be required to because this is baked in the ADU ordinance, so we would be submitting to them.
Okay.
Uh, Mayor, I, I just want to say for the record, I'm very frustrated with years of this, this and previous councils always finding excuses not to take actions that people are asking for to help them with their housing situation. This is an option. Seems like we always come up with a reason not to help.
If you want to, if you want to help poor people, help them get out of, living out of their van in their, in their sister's yard, that's how you can help someone. I'm thinking specifically of someone.
There's a substitute motion, Mayor. Can we take a vote?
Can we have a roll call, please, Gail?
Councilmember Francina?
Yes. We're voting on the first motion, right?
No, on the substitute motion.
We never voted on the first one.
The order under our, under-
Substitute motion.
If I could jump in real briefly, the order under Rosenberg's rules is for the substitute motion to be voted upon first. If that motion fails, then the main motion is voted on. If the substitute motion succeeds, then it succeeds. In this case, the substitute motion on the table would be to, would be to return the matter to staff.
It's okay. I know.
Okay, sorry.
I was just, I'm awake. No, no, my, my vote is no.
Councilmember Blatz?
I just want to say, we, we have exhausted this issue about affordability on these tiny homes in our last meeting. The same analysis is clear. There's nothing else the staff can report to us that can change that. There is no way for us to have certainty unless we want to wait for a court case to suddenly come up later on, which could be indefinite. So my, my vote is no. I don't believe that there's any point in sending this back again to our staff to get the same answer over and over again. That seems like a massive waste of time. That seems like a massive waste of time.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Mayor Sticks?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
So now we have another motion?
Now we have another motion. Can we have a, can we repeat the motion?
As I understand, the main motion is to introduce the ordinance as proposed.
Okay, roll call, please, Gail.
Mayor Sticks?
No.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Uh, you know, I would have liked to uh, um, ask the, uh, the motion maker to add, to uh, allow me to um, add something to it, but I blew it. So, you know, I'll vote yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, let's uh, let's take a brief five minute break and then we'll be back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Twenty seventeen. And it almost passed. Paul was unclear about the pads.
Okay, we're back. Yeah. Okay, we're, we're moving on to number, item number five. Yeah, the downtown trolley pilot program review. James, do you have a presentation?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
This is kind of, it's the status update um, to the um, the downtown trolley pilot program. Uh, we started the um, the city council adopted uh, a resolution to start the no fee Saturday trolley route uh, back on May 25th, 2021 uh, with the purpose of encouraging, encouraging uh, visitors, residents and others to um, utilize the trolley more on the weekends on Saturday and to um, to visit downtown businesses without increasing traffic uh, um, by using the trolley. And so uh, at that meeting, the city council uh, de- decided to uh, try it out for a limited uh, period, uh, uh, kind of a pilot period where we were going to work with the hotels to um, to recoup some of the costs and we would offer those trolley, that Saturday express trolley route free to users. Um, and so we, we, that route went into effect on July 4th. That was the big launch. Uh, and so this is the uh, essentially uh, about a three, three to four month status report. When we adopted it, council had asked that we report back after a few months. So this is that status report. Uh, and um, we've included some charts and some data. The, I think the main piece is from the first chart, you could see that when this first launch around 4th of July, it actually uh, was uh, pretty successful. Uh, the second week uh, in on July 10th, we had 96 riders uh, that day, which was the peak. Um, what you see is it trended, the, the ridership trended down from them, from then. But if you compare that to COVID and kind of the rise of the uh, Delta variant. And you know, if you can recall, 4th of July, a lot of people called that kind of like the celebration where uh, people thought we were moving past COVID. Unfortunately, as the Delta variant started to come in, you uh, and, and the numbers went up, you see that our ridership declined. And so um, and that I think is, it reflects also what we're hearing when we talk to people about riding the trolley, when we talk to the hotels about what they're seeing, is that people are hesitant to use public transportation under these circumstances. And it, I think that really is impacting uh, this, this project. And so we had said we'd come back and do a three to four month report back. Uh, we kind of stopped, looked at all the data, looked at the costs, looked, uh, another factor is that we've heard from some hotels that because the ridership is down, they're uh, are, are um, asking to kind of be uh, to not be, not have to make those payments um, to, to pay the uh, fee to be part of the program. So we are recommending at this time that we pause the, the program and reevaluate it in the future, once we are through this um, this current kind of situation where our ridership is impacted by COVID. Um, we had recommended pausing it uh, on October 15th, but uh, we actually have been meeting the last few days and have some ideas of how we can incorporate it into Ojai Day. So um, I think the one tweak to the staff report is we'd like to run it through October 16th to, to hold it or to use it for October 16th. The cost of the city would be about a thousand dollars, but um, that's a cost that we can cover with our Ojai Day um, a, a budget. And so our recommendation at this point is to hold it this Saturday with Ojai Day, but then at that point to pause it and reevaluate it in the future, so.
Thank you, James. Questions, Randy?
Um, I don't know if this is for James or, or Matt, but um, you know, years ago we had the OTED. Could the OTED have funded this um, trolley service if it was still um, in uh, in, in service or, or enacted?
Uh, short answer, yes, because it had stops at several of the hotels that are assessed under the OTED.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to public comment. Uh, Jamie Fleming?
Jamie Fleming, Chamber of Commerce. I agree with everything that James just reported as to the fact that COVID, I think, did make quite a bit of an impact. Uh, even when I was downtown, the visitors information table, we usually put it right there by the main trolley stop. And I had various different uh, riders when I would say, they say, well, how do I get down? Just grab this trolley. I, I don't feel comfortable getting on there. Are all the windows open? No, they're not all open. So I think we're already at a little bit disadvantage, but I really, really want to encourage the city to continue trying to pursue these type of solutions. Uh, because the reality, and we all know it, every, on weekends, people come in and all the parking lots at the hotels are full, parking lots downtown. And we have to make it so we're encouraging people to not get back in those cars and come back downtown just to go do something and then go somewhere else, go down the street to go uh, to a restaurant. And so using our mass transit, especially trolleys that are so, I think, great looking for tourists and, and visitors and locals. And when we have guests come in, it's just, you look at the trolley. But having a trolley route that takes an hour and is doing a full loop so that, my disadvantage when I kept working with the Ojai Valley Inn about the regular trolley was always they go, we cannot in good conscience ask our hotel guests to get on a trolley that will take them an hour to get back to us and only goes once an hour. So the beauty of this first uh, test we just did was at least we got to a half hour wait for anyone who wants to get back to their hotel or go to a restaurant. And I would love it if we could even get every 20 minutes on the really busy Saturdays. And I would be happy if we did this just during even um, daylight savings, you know, when the, we're, we're really busy on the weekends. Uh, but I just don't want us to give up because we all have been scratching our heads. We haven't figured out the parking and we haven't figured out these type of challenges. And yet here we have something that actually is a positive move in the right direction. And I hope there, that tax can go towards it because then we can really maybe make this go a little further. And I think the other advantage we had was actually offering it free so that people want to get on and off, get on and off and really use it as a tool to get them off, out of their cars. I think that's the way we should continue looking at this. Anyway, just wanted to thank you. I thought it was a great opportunity to start making some steps forward in a positive way.
Thank you, Jamie. Uh, Gail, any public comments on Zoom?
Let me check with the audience.
Thank you.
So if anyone is, who is on our Zoom channel, if you are um, interested in speaking on this item, if you would please use the raise hand function and raise your hand on Zoom and I will see your hand and call on you.
Okay.
No one's raising their hand.
All right, thank you. Um, let's move on to discussion.
I, 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 I agree with the recommendation. I also agree with Mr. Fleming that we need to keep looking at options along these lines. Look, if money was no object, it'd be nice to have a, a, a smaller uh, electric drive vehicle that was, you know, had more inherent ventilation and was less imposing when it came in. Uh, it'd be nice to, uh, as, as part of, of, of being able to have more frequency. So no, I'm not giving, and I'm not giving up, but again, you can't have an hour loop when, you know, you can get on a bike and make this run in 10 minutes. So that's another aspect of how do we encourage uh, uh, just people getting um, you know, uh, uh, on their bikes. Uh, I, I, you know, we're not near where we should be in terms of accommodating people uh, riding bikes and having a place to secure them while they're, while they're uh, enjoying uh, the, you know, areas around Ojai. So we need to keep moving in this direction, but I think uh, I, I certainly support the recommendation and the modification to the 16th for now.
A comment and question? Yeah, I agree. We definitely have to keep moving. We have no, no choice. We're not going to make uh, Ojai Avenue Four Lane is not going to happen. Um, so I'm curious, uh, James, can't the Ojai Valley Inn, um, at least on the weekend, do they have a shuttle service so that the guests can leave their cars at the Ojai Valley Inn? That just seems to make sense. Why can't they do that?
Yeah, we actually currently have an arrangement with the inn where the inn does pay a fee to uh, have the trolley stop at the inn to encourage that.
But it's that hour loop.
And it's the hour loop.
It's not a- It's not a shuttle.
Yeah, and so we had mentioned in the report, there was, we were working on some other opportunities. One is exploring options with the Inn, and that's something we'll continue to do and we'll come back, but we, we haven't been able to, to solve that as of today, so.
But that seems so logical.
A smaller electric vehicle if we get a grant or something, you know, I mean.
Yep, yeah.
We need to look at the options.
I mean, the Inn is great in providing bikes, but for those that, you know.
That can't.
Yeah, but it just seems that they need to shut.
We need to do something.
We can't just tell them there's no parking. We can't have their, we can't have their guests continue coming into town in their cars.
Well, we, we are, we, we're moving forward on our grant too for our electric, our, you know, our alternative fuel trolley. So, so there could be some ideas we can try to coordinate with them on.
Okay, we'll keep working on it.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve.
Randy wants to say something first?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It's interesting that we're looking for all these alternatives and we're looking for money to do it. And I think it was three years ago that we shot the OTED down because the argument was OTED was used for marketing and not for anything else. And Bill and I, our argument was the fact that you could do traffic studies with it, that you could do air quality, you know, studies with it. There were a multitude of things that you could do with that funding source that we failed to utilize. Here again is another opportunity or another missed opportunity because we don't have that. So it might be something that we want to revisit, maybe talk to the chamber, maybe talk to the, the hotels and, you know, get a feel from the community about, you know, it's not anything we have to do tomorrow. But again, if we're looking for alternative ways to move people in and out of the downtown corridor and not impact the people who live here and the money that is coming in to maintain parks and streets and all of the things that we need to secure that funding for, I think we need to look outside of that box.
Ask Randy a question? Randy, are you saying that we could use the OTED, we could re, if we wanted to re-look at that again, but we don't have to use the money to international, to market Ojai internationally? Because that was.
Well, again, I think that, you know, I was talking to this.
That's what we proposed.
Right, well, well, I was talking to someone about it today and it was interesting. I thought, I thought that that's how we shot ourselves in the foot is we started going to New York to put Ojai and Pixies in the New York Times or something.
Right.
And I think that there was a, to a degree, a misuse of funds by past chamber president.
Yeah.
I think the chamber today is, thank you, Jamie, for all you do, but the chamber today is more about Ojai and more about the betterment of our community. So I think that it might be an opportunity to look at it and manage it differently under a different management system. So I think there might be an opportunity here, but I'm, I'm not sure if we bring it to them or they bring it to us, but it's something that's worth starting a discussion over.
Well, I want to remind you, as we raised the TOT by approximately the same percentage as OTED was.
Right, right.
So we have funds.
Yep, we do.
Yeah.
So I'm, if it's in order, I'm gonna make a motion, we approve the staff recommendation with the modification to October 16th.
Second.
Okay, great. Roll call, please, Gail.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Mayor Sticks?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wirek?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. All right, well, our last item is number six. Consider a request for the city to adopt a position and direct that a letter be distributed opposing logging and vegetation removal in Los Padres National Forest on Pine Mountain Ridge, including Reyes Peak and on Mount Pinos. And I have a pre-statement. I'm asking the council to adopt a formal position of opposition to the proposed tree removal and chaparral clearance projects on Pine Mountain, Reyes Peak, and Mount Pinos. Cutting down trees and removing chaparral in our forest backcountry miles away from towns does not increase fire safety for forest adjacent communities such as Ojai. In fact, removing forest canopy and ground level native vegetation increases a solar access to the forest floor, thereby eliminating shady microclimates that retain moisture. This removal attracts faster burning invasive weeds and dries out the trees that are chosen to remain after the logging is completed. Time and again, working from the home out rather than the forest in by maintaining defensible space directly around structures and hardening homes to withstand ember casts has proven to be the most effective approach to protecting communities and native vegetation in our forests from fire. Over the past year, I've learned a lot about how wildfires impact forests, forests adjacent to communities like ours. What I now know is that homes that are adequately prepared for fire are most often the ones left standing after wildfires come through. Though there are many things one can do to harden a home and maintain defensible space in preparation for wildfires, some fire preparedness tactics are simple and can be executed at little or no cost. For example, keep the first five feet from structures free of anything that could ignite in a fire. Regularly clear leaves and pine needles from roof and rain gutters. Install fine mesh screens over attic and crawl space vents to block embers from entry. Plant fire safe vegetation and move all combustibles such as lawn furniture, firewood, et cetera, away from structures. For more information on wildfire preparedness and working from the home out, go to YouTube Fire Hardening Homes Ojai. Please leave our forests and chaparral standing. Thank you.
I would like, I know we have some public comment, but I just wanted to say I am so happy you put this on here, and I'm almost spitting mad about what the Forest Service has proposed here, so I'll have more to say about that.
Spitting mad, okay, thank you. Okay, we have three public comments, Alistair Coyne, Lanny Coffer, and Bill Miley.
Thank you to the council for this opportunity to comment. I represent Keep Sespe Wild. My name's Alistair Coyne. This decision by Los Padres Forest to log trees at Pine Mountain will go down in history as a shameful episode for a usually popular land management agency. It always was merely a logging project. They dressed it up as a forest fire break project early on to protect a small community many miles away, and they added some chaparral clearing to disguise the fact. Comments came in from hundreds of citizens with many valid concerns. Were the trees up to 24 inches in diameter really less than 90 years old as they claimed? No. Counting the tree rings on dozens of fallen trees in the forest showed that many of them are several hundred years old. Is this needed for forest health? No evidence provided. The most important comments came in a 10-page academic paper written by Carla Dantonio, a professor at UCSB whose career has been dedicated to native forest environments and fire. Let me read a few sentences from that. The proposed actions lack careful justification and sufficient detail to evaluate if they're necessary and will be effective over both short and long term. Likewise, a clear vision of desired future conditions is missing. There are no data provided to indicate that the health of the forest is in peril or in need of improvement and health is not defined. The project plan refers, refers to the forests of Reyes Peak as being overstocked. This unfortunate terminology is not scientifically sound and implies there's an ideal stocking density that should be maintained. So now we have the Los Padres Forest's final decision, a green light for logging. Did they offer any mitigations in response to public comments? No. Did they agree it's important to check the real age of the trees they plan to log? No. Friends, it is now entirely clear that this was, was and is only a logging project. Last week, Ojai Valley News carried a quote from the project manager who said, quotes, "This isn't a timber project. This is a blip, the tiniest little amount of wood," end of quote. More falsehoods. Los Padres Forest's own proposal says they plan to log 36 trees per acre for 423 acres, which is over 15,000 trees up to 24 inches in diameter. If you look at the logging calculations for lumber and timber creation, it reveals that 15,000 trees, even if they were only 18 inches in diameter, will produce over 880,000 board feet of lumber, which happens to be just the size of Los Padres Forest's logging quota of 800,000 board feet. Not exactly a blip. There you have it. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Alistair. Next, we have Lanny Coffer.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak to the council, Mayor Sticks and council members. I sent you a letter last week and I actually sent a slightly revised letter today because I learned a few things were incorrect in my previous letter. So I'm going to just go ahead and read my letter as I send it to you and for the public record. I have hiked, camped, and backpacked on Pine Mountain for the past 50 years and have led hikes there since 2012 under a U.S. Forest Service special use permit for outfitters and guides. Despite my partnership with and respect for the Forest Service, I must speak out in opposition to the Reyes Peak Forest Health and Fuels Reduction Project that received final approval from the Forest Service on September 30th. I urge you, the Ojai City Council, to join the Ventura County Board of Supervisors in opposing this project as well as a similar project proposed on Pine Mountain. Here's why. In May of 2020, the Trump administration first announced this project as a proposal and solicited public comment. The project covers 775 acres and includes removal of large living trees and snags up to 24 inches wide and up to 64 inches in some cases. It creates skid trails and landing areas where timber will be decked and loaded onto trucks. It also calls for removal of hundreds of acres of native chaparral habitat, and it utilizes narrow winding Pine Mountain road to accomplish these goals. Over 16,000 people and organizations voiced their concern that the project was not receiving the usual environmental assessment or environmental impact statement under the National Environmental Policy Act that one would expect for a rare and sensitive old growth forest like Pine Mountain. The Forest Service chose instead to invoke a categorical exclusion loophole that allows the project to move forward quickly. This much less thorough approach limits the public's ability to comment on the project as it goes through the approval process. While the Forest Service did prepare some reports assessing the environmental effects, none of these met the standards of a true environmental assessment, and none were available for public review until the project was already approved. Sadly, there is no public appeal process now short of a legal challenge in the courts. It did not have to happen this way. Experts far more knowledgeable than I about forest health voiced, voiced their objections to the proposal. Why were their opinions ignored? Why were the voices of 16,000 citizens ignored? I thank you, council, for sharing your concerns about this project with the Forest Service in July of 2020. Now I ask you to please join the nearly 70 organizations in taking a stand once again on behalf of the citizens of Ojai against the Reyes Peak project.
Thanks, Lanny. Perfect timing. Yeah. Bill Miley?
Have to stay warm, and I can't put my glasses on, so, okay. Okay. Good evening. For the record, my name is Bill Miley. Considering that the Forest Service has not an approval to do this large tree and shrub removal, I would like to urge the council to prepare a very strong letter of concern about this approval, considering that I understand they used a loophole to avoid proper environmental review. Chopping up one of the last green tree forests in the southern, in the southern Los Padres Forest and doing it because forests should be thin is really not good enough. Certainly at least, the requirements of the National Environmental Policy Act should be followed. Urging and supporting the Los Padres Forest Watch and their efforts to stop this and to restructure a proper environmental review is very important. And I know that they're accepting donations to help them with lawsuit. I added my small amount last night. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Gail, any public comments on Zoom?
Yes, we have three people who've raised their hands. If there's anyone else on Zoom who wants to speak on this agenda item, if you would please use the raise hand function and I will call on you. I'll call the first person, Chad Hansen. Chad, if you're there, you can go ahead and speak. If you're muted, please unmute yourself and you can go ahead.
Thank you. This is Dr. Chad Hansen. I'm a forest and fire ecologist with the John Muir Project. I've, I've been hiking in both of these areas since I was a kid and backpacking. I've also gathered a lot of data in these areas over the years, including recently. These are important areas. These are special areas ecologically. And this proposed, these two proposed logging projects would cause very serious ecological damage to these important ecosystems for a lot of different species. But in addition, forest fires are driven primarily by weather and climate factors. That's what my own research shows. That's what the research of many of my colleagues shows. That's where the best available science is. It's not driven by, you know, the conditions that the Forest Service is claiming. And in fact, what most of the research is showing is the more trees you remove from the forest, the more susceptible you make those forests to extreme weather, including especially those hot, dry, windy conditions that, that tend to drive the flames. And, and all it does is really desiccate the forest and change a microclimate in ways that are actually more conducive to fire while damaging wildlife habitat in the process. So I, I'm really encouraged by this resolution in opposition to these two logging projects. I think that's, it's, it's a very, very strong and important statement. And, and I'm happy to provide any information for council members or others if people are interested. This is something I've done quite a bit of research on over the years and I'm always happy to talk about the issues. And I'll just leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you, Chad. I just want to say, we love your book, so.
Yeah, highly recommended.
Here it is.
What's the title of the book?
The title of the book is Smoke Screen: Debunking Wildfire Myths to Save Our Forest and Our Climate, so.
Thank you. Maybe he's gone.
Okay, the next person we have is Megan Burkfest. Megan, if you're there, you can go ahead and speak. If you're muted, please unmute yourself and you can go ahead and talk.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Good evening, Mayor Sticks and council. I want to expose a myth about forests in our country that is continually repeated in the mainstream media. Then I want to share some facts about the Los Padres Forest. So here's the myth. There's a huge buildup of fuel in our forests due to decades of Smokey the Bear era fire suppression. This fuel buildup causes fires to burn more intensely. Now here are the facts. Forest science tells us, contrary to what is continually repeated in the media, that very few forests have excessive fuel buildup. In the Los Padres, there is actually a deficit of native vegetation and trees, not excessive buildup. Our native shrubland ecosystems, chaparral, coastal sage, scrub, and even higher elevation forested areas have evolved with fire for millions of years. Historically, most areas in the Los Padres experienced fires every 30 to 150 years. These were typically large, intense fires that covered thousands to hundreds of thousands of acres due to extreme winds. Human-caused ignitions are increasing fire frequency, so in some areas, the Los Padres Forest is actually burning too often rather than not often enough. Unfortunately, in many locations, these unnaturally short intervals between fires are allowing invasive plants to thrive. Invasive grasses dry out earlier in the year than native vegetation and actually burn much faster. In addition, when we remove trees trees and native ground cover, the shady, moist microclimates disappear, and the trees that remain are drier and end up surrounded by invasive grasses. This is not forest health. This is forest destruction. Please oppose the logging and chaparral removal on Pine Mountain and Mount Pinos. Thank you, and thank you so much for bringing this. I just, thank you.
Thank you, Megan.
One moment. Let me get to the last person we have is Bryant Baker. Bryant, if you're there, you can go ahead and speak. It looks like you're unmuted. You can go ahead and talk.
Good evening. Can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Am I able to show my video too? I feel bad. You guys are all out in the cold out there, and I just feel like I should show my face. I don't know. Maybe I should be wearing a jacket. Although I have to say, I'm a little bit jealous of you getting to hang out in the cool crisp air of Ojai. It's making me wish I could be there tonight in person. But, you know, good evening, Mayor Sticks and members of the council. My name is Bryant Baker, and I'm the Conservation Director for Los Padres Forest Watch, a local nonprofit dedicated to protecting the Los Padres National Forest and other public lands in the region. And thank you, Mayor Sticks, for bringing this item before the council and for giving us all an opportunity to speak. I really appreciate folks who are there in person and speaking, as well as Dr. Hanson and Megan, who just spoke. Really appreciate their comments and their input. The Reyes Peak or Pine Mountain project just approved by the Forest Service, as well as the similar proposal on Mount Pinos, puts two of the very few truly forested areas in Ventura at risk. You can find the highest diversity of conifers of anywhere in the county along Pine Mountain Ridge, and the unique old-growth chaparral there provides important habitat for hundreds of species of plants and wildlife. Mount Pinos is home to the largest expanse of conifer forests in the Los Padres, and it's interspersed with beautiful Montane chaparral. The unique mix of ecosystems in these areas is one of the reasons why they are so biologically diverse. And both Pine Mountain and Mount Pinos for thousands of years have been, have been, and continue to be culturally significant to local indigenous peoples. Several campgrounds and trails in both areas serve as premier destinations for recreationists throughout the region. Hikers, backpackers, climbers, mountain bikers, skiers, bird watchers, and other nature lovers value Pine Mountain and Mount Pinos for the excellent recreational opportunities they provide. These projects will allow timber harvesting and chaparral removal using soil-disturbing heavy equipment that may change Pine Mountain and Mount Pinos for decades to come. We have serious concerns about the project's likelihood of spreading inflammable invasive plants while inhibiting the mixed conifer forests there from adapting to climate change. And according to the latest forest and fire science, neither project will protect communities from wildfire, especially in considering just how remote these projects are. What's particularly troubling, as Lanny brought up earlier, is that the Forest Service has used loopholes to avoid preparing an environmental assessment or an environmental impact statement for the project on Pine Mountain, and they've indicated that they're going, they plan to do the same thing for the Mount Pinos project. As you are no doubt aware, we are not alone with these concerns. Over the past 16 months, we have worked closely with dozens of organizations, businesses, tribal leaders, and elected officials to urge the Forest Service to change course. And over 18,000 people have spoken out against one or both of the projects. As we pointed out in our letter to the council last week, this includes over 1,700 residents in Ojai alone. I'm also aware that the council has received at least 240 or so letters from Ojai residents urging you to oppose these projects for this hearing tonight. Additionally, the Ventura County Board of Supervisors voted last week to officially oppose the Pine Mountain project and submit a letter to the Forest Service detailing this opposition. So we urge you to take this up and please vote to oppose these projects and direct the mayor to transmit this position to agencies, legislators, and the Forest Service, as well as the Department of Agriculture. Thank you.
Thank you, Bryant. All right, we'll open for discussion.
Thank you again, mayor, for bringing this forward, because as I've been watching this and the more I've been learning about it, it just gets more outrageous the more you learn. The idea that we're going to take a precious and rare, increasingly rare, and the description I come up with is a sky island. These areas that are high in elevation, that are old growth, they're very special biogeographical areas, very precious, and to use fire mitigation as an excuse to monetize old-growth lumber in these very precious ecologies and to circumvent the normal process of analysis through these loopholes is, I don't understand it. I guess I could maybe understand something like this, starting in the Trump administration. How this got done in the Biden administration is something absolutely beyond me. I don't get it at all. So what I would suggest, and what I would be supportive of, is that we take the strongest possible position in opposition, including whatever is reasonable and legal in terms of participating in court challenges in alliance with other organizations to this decision. That's how I feel about it.
Maybe Alistair, you could answer. I have some questions. If they move forward, in spite of all the opposition, what is, what is an approximate date? And then I have a follow-up suggestion.
I'm sorry, have we closed the public comments section?
I just have a question. Maybe if James, it's just a question. Do you, do you know?
The question is, is how soon could logging begin? Is that what you're?
Yes, if they don't, if in spite of all the objection.
Nothing's going to happen very quickly.
That's what I wanted to know. So my, okay, it's, public comment is closed, so, but thank you. That's what I needed to know. And then I'm thinking already ahead, if in spite of court challenges and all that, it feels like we need national coverage. This is a story. And, you know, the level of protests and the, and the, and the fact that they're, if they're not listening, that's a conflict enough to merit a national story. And then from there, if necessary, there should be a protest, you know, if, I don't think, you know, that it'd go forward. But if it did, we should have hundreds and hundreds of people there and national coverage, you know, with cameras, so that it doesn't happen. You know, we can have a plan so that for sure, this never happens.
And I just would say, I think right now, the position is, what can we do to help with the court challenge?
Yeah.
And, you know, I mean, you have one detail that I learned talking with somebody this earlier this week, and that, I said, how do you, how do they handle the fact that the cost of getting these board feet out of such a remote area, right next to the Condor Reserve, and et cetera, et cetera, without, you know, even, you know, even again, not really specifying proper mitigations, how do they, they actually, what I heard was, and I don't know, I can't confirm this, but what I heard from someone knowledgeable about this, they actually adjust down what they have to pay the Forest Service to take this board feet out. In other words, they actually subsidize the removal from the remote area in the way that they structure the bid process and the payment process for this. So, you know what, it's just, the more you learn, the more it's just a model, it's a paradigm of forest management that is old, outmoded, dysfunctional. And I just really urge us to figure out, you know, how we can word this resolution in a way to do most constructively, or other cities and other agencies to join in this. I see it's in the resolution. And to join in a court challenge as appropriate. I really think we need to do that.
Let's do it.
Yes, Randy.
Could that be the motion?
Well, that wasn't a.
So, you know, it's, we've all received a lot of emails from a lot of people.
280 letters, I think.
I'm sorry?
280 letters.
So, you know, this is a knee-jerk reaction to climate change. That's what we have to say. That's exactly what it is. And I kind of put this right up there with the, with the Trump presidency about raking leaves and the undergrowth of all of these national forests. If we just did a better job of picking litter up, we wouldn't have these problems. So it's, it's just, you know, the hard part about it is, is we had three brilliant people, scientists speak tonight. I would take these two gentlemen any day with me regarding the environment, you know, alongside of me and have them speak for me. They know more about it than I do, that aspect of it. And, you know, this is just failure to plan properly and accepting bogus science as bogus science. So whatever we choose to do, I think we have the community's support behind us. I don't think we have to labor this to death. And I would say turn this over to our city attorney and city manager. If Mayor Sticks would like to join in on the writing of the resolution, if it's not a resolution before us. You know.
And I would like to stipulate, as appropriate, consider participation
Okay.
in court challenge, whether it's an advocacy support letter brief or even more than that. But if we need to come back with options for resolutions supporting court action, I will vote for it.
And I'd like to hear from Councilman Blatz, if he'd like to speak to this.
I think we're, I think we're all on lockstep that we should do everything we can to, do what we can to push back on this. And I think that's, I think the community's clear. I think we're all clear. And we don't have any options on the table yet. We're going to have to discuss as things come up. But I think we're all going to start on the same footing of, let's do what we can to try and stop this from happening.
Great.
Great. All right, well.
Delegate to you.
I'll make a motion that the city adopt a position and direct that a letter be distributed opposing logging and vegetation removal in Los Padres National Forest on Pine Mountain Ridge, including Reyes Peak and on Mount Pinos.
And may I make a friendly amendment? Will we add, explore options for joining in opposition, judicial opposition?
Right. Okay. Another friendly amendment. We could attach the 280 letters, or at least mention that we have that. Those are, the letters are fabulous.
My recommendation would be.
Thank you to everyone who wrote those letters.
We cite them but not attach them. We'll speak more powerfully with a distilled voice.
Yes, I think that's true. But we can mention. We have a second for the motion?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please, Gail.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
Mayor Sticks?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
Yes.
Yay! Save the forest. All right. Thank you, everybody, and thanks for participating. And read, read this book.
Thank you, everyone.
It's really.
Interesting discussion.
Okay, we'll move on to council member reports. Okay, well, I would love.
I have one real quick, but go ahead.
Well, I just want to, we have this beautiful peace poll right here that was donated, given as a gift from a group called May Peace Prevail on Earth. And it's in English, Spanish, Schumash, and Mandarin. And it's a gift to us, and we can put it wherever we want. So, James, that's going to be on the agenda next time?
Yeah, we'll have an item on probably the next agenda to accept it and then to identify a location to place it.
Thank you. And then just a plug for Ojai Day, Saturday, 10 to, what, 10 to?
10 to 4.
Okay. Thank you, staff, for organizing that. Be fun.
In the category of what the heck, Mac, the Mac Municipal Advisory Council is going to take this up and some other matters. But, you know, all of a sudden, there's 35 miles per hour on the asphalt and 40 miles an hour on the sign going through Oak View. And, you know, you're kind of, I don't know what, I always find it interesting when Caltrans makes a decision to have directly contradictory speed limits and then expect the law enforcement to enforce that somehow. Which one do you pick, right? The 35 or the 40? What the heck is going on? And so I do think that part of it is this old view that speed limits are set by the prevailing speed rather than the proper safety design. I thought that was changing. I thought Caltrans was evolving. I just, you know, I would hope I can, I can find time to figure out what's going on there with the Mac. But really, what the heck, right? The sign changes to 40, and it still says 35 right next to it on the street, you know? Just absolutely crazy to be increasing speeds there. I don't get it at all, after all the discussion and public interest that we had. I also wanted to point out that I gave a talk to Rotary on the ATP project, especially the history, and found out some interesting nuggets, you know, in terms of the battles that occurred in '68, '69, '70, and '71, and only reinforced my contention through that learning of more history, that the Maricopa Highway, which I hope we turn to turn into an avenue soon, was built by the people advocating for the freeway and lane widening connections, including advocating for a 94-foot-wide curb-to-curb road from the river bottom around Rice and Lamita, right, right over the ranch houses now, right through the meadows, to join up with the not-yet-made into a four-lane Maricopa Avenue. And then, continuing, I am not lying, to a hundred, to a road right through the Valley Bike Trail here. And when asked, some of the advocates were asked, well, what are you going to do about Libby Bowl? The answer is, well, we're going to take out 30-something trees, four or five residences, and we'll find another place for Libby Bowl. That was the mentality that built Maricopa Avenue, Maricopa Highway. I hope to make it avenue soon. And that's why I think we're at an historic juncture to finish the work that started with that uprising to stop that changing in the character of the valley. And I know Randy and I will go on forever about this, but I think intelligent design is the way to go on this. So I just, I just thought I'd add that a further study of history only further, you know, strengthen my convictions and my suspicions are further confirmed that that four-lane Maricopa Highway was not built as part of a plan for traffic accommodation for the shopping center or the high school or any of that. It was built as part of bringing in the freeway construction up the river bottom connecting to east-west, including, this wouldn't be here if the people that were pushing for Maricopa Avenue or highway had their way in terms of what they wanted to do for Ojai. So anyway, I just thought I'd bring in that little bit of history. I found it very interesting.
May I add to that?
No.
Well, this is a council member report.
Can someone help me understand what we're doing here when we're asking for council reports? Or are we here tooting our own horn?
I gave a report on a presentation.
You gave a report about yourself.
Let's not, uh.
I'm sorry, that had nothing to do with any agency you deal with. That's your own personal opinion.
Well, I'll add.
Then why don't we add to it?
Okay, well, I'll add that too.
Personal opinion report.
The Ventura County Transportation Commission, when presented with the proposal to endorse a initiative for a sales tax addition to include widening of the 101, decided to vote against that endorsement because simple freeway widening is not proven to be constructive in and of itself in terms of addressing traffic congestion. So that's also a report from the VCTC.
That's a nice report.
Okay. Let's move on to the city manager's report. Let's, okay.
Jesus. Lost your place.
I know, Mayor, thank you for mentioning Ojai Day. Somehow it is mid-October, and somehow Saturday is already the, what is it, the third Saturday in Ojai, which is Ojai Day, which is hard to believe. But we wanted to, to remind everybody to attend. It's a little different this year. It's going to be local focus, a little smaller, but more local vendors and local booths. And we're going to have it Saturday, 10 to 4, as Mayor Sticks mentioned, at Libby Park. So that's a little different. It's going to be at the park, and we're going to be, have some events also on Signal here. And so everybody can come out and join us. We also wanted to announce, we just got this finalized, but we're going to have the first kind of, a little bit different. So we're going to have a movie night at 7:00 PM here at Libby Bowl to conclude Ojai Day. And so, as you can see on the poster, we'll be showing Coco to get everybody ready for the Halloween season. And so if you ever wanted to come to the Bowl and watch a movie, this will be an opportunity to do so. So everybody can come out to join Ojai Day from 10:00 AM. So everybody can come out to join Ojai Day from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM, watch Coco at 7:00 PM. The local historian, Richard Sennett, is going to start that off by telling some ghost stories here at the Bowl, so you can make a day of it. So hope to see everybody there. And that's all I have today.
Thanks, James. Thanks for making that happen.
Thank you.
Future agenda items? Randy?
Well, I'd like to put affordable housing on a future agenda and figure out how we're going to deal with it. So, affordable housing.
I agree.
Yes, please.
Affordable and low income, right?
Well, affordable.
Well, that discussion will, that discussion will actually clarify.
Yes.
All aspects of affordability in this community.
And I would say, including options like rent stabilization and.
Living wage.
It's all on the board.
Anything else?
For, not for me, I want to, I just, I'm curious when we're going to discuss help, you know, the help, the building, the.
Help of Ojai?
The.
City campus?
Yeah, so I think at this point, our plan was to, at the first meeting in November, talk about, or I have an item where we can talk about some, some programming options.
Okay, yeah. The other things I have, I will just discuss with James first. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Well, thanks, everybody, for bundling up and being out here in the cold and making good decisions. So, thank you, and have a beautiful night.
Thank you.